All rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open. Pursue it to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
I want to go ahead and ask if there's anyone hasn't signed in on the sheet to speak tonight, we can go ahead and come forward right now to sign. Thank you, Sheriff. Tonight's invocation will be given by Mr. Bruce Raely, executive pastor of First Baptist Church in Hendersonville. Mr. Raely.
Would you pray with me, please? Our Father, tonight as we gather, we pause to thank you for your blessings. We know your word tells us every good and every perfect gift is from above, and you have blessed us with freedoms in our nation, and we thank you for that. We thank you for the country in which we live. We thank you for our state. We thank you for our county. We thank you for the privilege that we have to assemble together, the freedom of speech and the freedom to worship. Father, tonight, as we gather, part of the business tonight is to pay honor to our fallen brother Spencer Bristol. We thank you for his legacy that he has left. We thank you for the work that you called him to and the difference that he made in our community. We continue to pray for his family, for his wife Lauren, for his daughter Eloise, his parents. We pray you'll continue to provide comfort and strength to them in the days ahead. But, Father, also now lift up our elected officials. I pray tonight that you will give them wisdom to make wise decisions. I pray, Father, that you will give them discerning spirits. And, Father, may through all of it, we be one in Jesus Christ. In His name we pray. Amen.
Do you salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Mr. Raely. All right, it's a roll call, everyone.
Each commissioner, please record your presence.
All right, 22 members present. Chairman Langford is out of town tonight, won't be here, obviously. And then also Commissioner Shell is home recovering from surgery that she's had here recently, so. All right, we're moving on to the approval of the regular agenda. Before we do that, I want to, without objection, move the certificates of recognition up above the recognition of the public. With that, or any other?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Mansfield?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to propose that we move to have the original Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution in the packet be added to the regular agenda. I so move.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, Mr. Mansfield, second one, Mr. Taylor. Then we need 16 votes, okay? You want to set that up?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Goode?
What was the motion again? What was it in the first?
The motion, Mr. Mansfield, was to add the original resolution that was presented to the Legislative Committee to the agenda as well.
It's in our packet.
Yeah, it's in our packet. Where would you propose to move it to on the agenda?
Legislative.
Okay, so just right under the... So under Legislative Committee, we'll call it Item F2. Let's do a voice vote first, and if we need to go to the board, we can. So all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead and add that then to Legislative Item Number Two. Commissioner Mo Taylor, you having another item?
Yeah, just a clarification, Mr. Chairman. The packet that you received has a road list in it, and in the packet, page 17 was omitted. It goes from 16 to 18, but you have a complete road list on your desk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Can y'all speak up a little bit?
Okay, so with that, with those changes, is there approval of the irregular consent agenda? Mr. Foster, second. Second, Ms. Kruger, all in favor?
Aye.
Sure that's unanimous? All right, approval of the minutes of January 27, 2020? Motion, Mr. DeWitt, second. Mr. Rhodes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's abstention, Ms. Kruger. All right. Okay, before recognition public, we're going to move the certificates of recognition. If we can ask the family of Master Patrol Officer Spencer Daniel Bristol to come forward, and Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like the entire family to come forward. I know there's a lot here from HPD. You're all welcome in the back to come up. I know we have a lot of police officers on this body. If you would like to come up, please do. While they're coming up, since we have a pretty good crowd here tonight, and for those watching, this body does, almost on a monthly basis, we recognize Sumner Canyons that accomplish, you know, wonderful things. In most cases, it's academic, sports-related, a county job, retirement, and other things like that. They're critically important to all of our fellow Sumner Canyons. But I'll submit to you and say, fortunately, thank God, we hardly ever, ever, ever have to be doing the resolution we're doing tonight, and I would submit to you that it's by far probably the most critical we've ever done in consideration of your sacrifices and the service that was given to the county. So I'll share this resolution here. A resolution honoring the memory of Master Patrol Officer Spencer Daniel Bristol. Whereas Master Patrol Officer Spencer Daniel Bristol passed away in the line of duty on December 30, 2019, and Sumner County suffered an immeasurable loss with the passing. Whereas Officer Bristol attended Station Camp High School and served in the United States Navy from 2007 to 2012 before joining Hendersonville Police Department, was later assigned to Flex and SWAT teams, and was recently promoted to Master Patrol Officer, where he was greatly instrumental in combating and controlling the city's drug trade. Whereas Officer Bristol was a loving husband and father, as well as a selfless, dedicated individual who was genuine concerns about others' touched lives in such a positive way that he would always be remembered and honored for the ultimate sacrifice he made to help for us to remain safe. Whereas Officer Bristol bravely, in the devotion to duty and to his community, have earned his place in our hearts and memories of all of us whom he was willing to rank and protect us, and we owe him a debt of gratitude and sacrifice. I would add to that that we would never be able to pay. Now therefore be resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 24th day of February of 2020, that this body does hereby offer our heartfelt sympathies to the family and fellow police officers to Master Patrol Officer Spencer Daniel Bristol, and honor his life and memory for his selfless and dedicated service to the citizens of Sumner County. Be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and a clerk will furnish a copy of this resolution to the family of Master Patrol Spencer Daniel Bristol. I'm going to add, may God continue to bless his soul and your family. We thank you for your service.
Motion there, Mr. Goode?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Goode, second, Chris Taylor. All in favor?
I don't have a lot to say besides thank you for the overwhelming support. We are so grateful, and thank all of you for supporting these guys over here, because I know their job has been much tougher since this has happened, and we are genuinely appreciative and so thankful for the support of the community through all of this. It really means a lot to know that Spencer won't be forgotten.
I would add that Spencer loved his community. He grew up here. When he got out of the Navy, he wanted to come back and serve. And he died doing that.
Okay, we'll move on to recognition of the public. Just to remind everyone of the ground rules for this portion. No citizen shall speak in inflammatory or offensive manner concerning any commissioner, other elected officials, or another citizen. Each person will have five minutes for their...to speak. Mr. Kemp will notify with like a one minute remaining, and then we'll call...notify us when that minute's finished. We also ask, I know, just looking at the agenda items, the folks who signed up, I believe everyone who chose to sign up is speaking on the Second Amendment Resolution. Part of the rules and procedures is for a speaker to not repeat necessarily what a previous speaker has already spoken. And so when we call your name, if you have any additional comments that haven't already been said, feel free to come up, or you can just choose to just notify us that you agree with previous person type of thing. With that, looks like we've got about 26 folks signed up. So we'll come up to this front speaker right here. The first person is Colonel Don Scruggs. Okay. And after Mr. Scruggs will be Kimberly Haas. Colonel Scruggs, if you can say your name and your address, please.
Yes, may it please the court. I'm Don Scruggs, 141 Bush Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. I was born in this county, of course, most of y'all know that. My family goes back, my fifth grandfather was the principal chief of the Cherokee Nation. We've been in Tennessee longer than Tennessee was ever a state. We was here before the United States became a country. That's how long my family's been here. The Second Amendment's very important to me. Without the Second Amendment, none of the other amendments would be worth a nickel. We've always stood for people taking care of theirself and supporting their own. We ask you tonight to consider and vote for the first resolution Commissioner Mansfield has put out, because I think that's the best one of the two you've got, and I don't hate the one you've got, but what I'm saying, the second one, but I love the first one more, and I ask you to pass it tonight. And I want to just...I just can't...I don't want to get emotional up here, but the Second Amendment is very important to me, and I want to express that to y'all before you vote, that I want you to know that people in this county, that it's been here ever since the beginning, thanks so much of this amendment. Most of you know me, know that I've been pushing the...forgetting the deputies in the schools, because I really do feel with a three-minute...with a three-minute response time on a school shooting, we need our deputies and guns in the school, and I think it follows the Second Amendment. And I'm asking you very politely tonight that you not only pass the Second Amendment Resolution tonight, that Mr. Mansfield has done it, but I'm going to come back in another month or two, and I'm going to ask you to take the $3.5 million that you're wanting to waste on the barn and put it on school security, and get all the schools, all the schoolhouses in Sumner County protected against school shootings. And with that, I'm going to relinquish my time to the next speaker.
All right, so after this speaker will be Don Lopakilo.
Good evening, Commissioners. Oh, my name is Kimberly Haas, and my address is 1246 Smith Thompson Road, Bethpage, Tennessee, 37022. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Kimberly Haas, and I represent the Sumner County Stands United. We are part of a larger grassroots movement whose primary mission is to cover the great state of Tennessee in a blanket of 2A protection at the county level. These are all proactive resolutions that specifically target any unconstitutional action that would infringe upon the Second Amendment rights of the people. At this time, 85 of our 95 counties have begun this effort, and over 40 counties have already successfully passed their 2A resolutions. Before you is the original Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution that we presented on Monday, February 10, before the Legislative Committee. What appeared to be a show of support by Commissioner from the 9th District was quickly identified to be misleading, in my opinion. He mentioned his support for the Second...
Yes, what were you saying from negative comments toward the Commissioners, please?
In one fell swoop and against the wishes of the people, all but one of Sumner...all of one of Sumner County's Legislative Committee members decided to trash and replace...sorry, amend the entire Second Amendment Resolution to reflect the support for the entire Bill of Rights. Then they proceeded to vote yes to that very amended resolution before a single word was written. I read this document and was honestly shocked and appalled. It is my opinion that this watered-down document was produced solely to dismiss our efforts while satiating the people, which it absolutely failed to do. What is disturbing about this document is that it refers to our rights as privileges. This Bill of Privileges Resolution not only has zero teeth, but accomplishes nothing for the citizens of Sumner County. Sumner County is the first and only county to vote no on the presented Second Amendment Resolution presented by the constituents. As a proactive safeguard, our Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution states the county will withhold funding for any government action that would infringe on the rights of the people to keep in arms at both the state and federal level. This identical resolution has passed in Jefferson, Loudon, Wilson, and McNary County. Additionally, three other counties, Bradley, Cumberland, Meeks, have passed resolutions which included the withholding of funds for unconstitutional actions. In 2015, the state of Tennessee passed a bill to amend TCA Title 38, Chapter 3, Subsection 115, which prevents all state funding from enforcing unconstitutional acts which infringe on the rights of citizens to keep and bear arms. Some of you have stated that we don't need this. Our rights are not in jeopardy. The level of pushback that we have received from this resolution has shown to me that we absolutely have a reason for concern. We have red flag bills HB 1873 and SB 1807 that prove otherwise. It is not our responsibility as citizens to evaluate the probability any proposed bill will pass. Moreover, who is to say what can't pass today won't pass in the next election cycle? I for one am not ready to accept that risk, and the people of Sumner County shouldn't have to accept that risk, because what a risk it is. Red flag laws violate due process and are therefore unconstitutional. Red flag laws infringe on my right to keep and bear arms and are therefore unconstitutional. Red flag laws do not allow those charged to face their accusers and are therefore unconstitutional. Red flag laws allow police to search or confiscate guns without probable cause for a search warrant and are therefore unconstitutional. Red flag laws impose excessive fines and punishments and are therefore unconstitutional. Red flag laws go against our founding principle that we are innocent until proven guilty and are therefore unconstitutional. Some of you have questioned your authority to pass the original resolution. I assert that you not only have the authority, but you have the duty to. We simply ask you to uphold your oath to enforce the...to not enforce unconstitutional laws. This assertion that you lack authority completely ignores the generations-old doctrine of lesser magistrate. Within a hierarchy of government, should a higher level of government decide to do something tyrannical, a lesser magistrate, a lower level of government submits to...stands up to the higher level of government and says, "No, you can't do that." The hierarchy of government submits to law, and in our law, in our land, that law is the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights therein. When elected officials go off the rails and decide to make their own laws and violate the supreme law of the land, the question is asked, who is going to stop them? Well, it's the lesser magistrate. The lesser form of government includes local government, and the buck stops right here. Why not assert and protect our inherent rights at this level? Please vote yes to the original resolution and show us that you prioritize our rights.
Next up will be in queue will be Brandon Johnson. Just before you start, Ms. Lopakilo, just want to just fail to mention earlier, you know, I understand everyone's excited and everything, but just, you know, a polite applause, etc., is fine. No cheering, no jeering for opposing opinions, but go ahead, Ms. Lopakilo.
My name's Donna Piccolo. I live at 9020 Fenton Road, Lebanon, Tennessee. I never developed the ability to be anything but 100% forthright, and I strive at all times to be truthful, and to that end, I'll be very frank in my remarks, but I mean absolute no disrespect, as my intention is to get the heart of the matter and have meaningful conversation about oath and Constitution. Regarding the Chairman of the Legislative Committee from District 5, he announced the original resolution violates his oath. He made similar comments in his responses to citizens' emails. After the meeting, a copy of the oath was even requested from the county attorney, and leads me to believe he really wasn't sure. So how can a resolution that we propose that clearly states that it wants elected officials to uphold their oath of office and swear to abide by Tennessee and U.S. Constitution violate his oath? He also stated that Tennessee is in no danger of losing our second-day rights and feels this way based on a conversation he had with somebody at the state level. In the 2019 Virginia election, there were over 5.6 million registered voters with only 2,383,646 that voted. That represents 42.4 voter turnout. The apathy in Virginia lost the election. Since November, their governor is ripping to shreds the Second Amendment and putting forth legislation that makes most goings-on in Virginia felons. The chairman, I feel, displayed the same apathy, but hoping and praying it doesn't happen here is not how a prudent official should vote. We, the people, want our elected officials to be proactive. Others say the original resolution is unconstitutional. Some believe the county attorney was giving bad, inslanted advice, and since I don't believe in hearsay...
Mr. Chairman.
I spoke with the Sumner County Attorney, and I shared a long conversation and many emails. I ended the conversation by summarizing her thoughts so we had a mutual understanding. I asked her, "Did you ever tell any commissioner to vote or not vote for the original resolution?" She said no. I asked her, "Did you tell the Commissioners that the original resolution was unconstitutional or illegal in any way?" She said no. "Did you tell me that your only issue with the original resolution is that you have concerns with regards to funding, as it applied to the Sheriff's Department, and how that would be carried out?" She said yes. I then asked her to put that in writing, and she said she couldn't do it for me, but would do it at the request of a commissioner. So I asked Commissioner Mansfield to submit the request on my behalf. I'm submitting my emails between Commissioner Mansfield, myself, and the county attorney, showing how she was asked four different times to put the above in writing, and she refused to do this. She missed an opportunity to shed light this evening, because if something is not illegal and it's not unconstitutional, how does it violate the Chairman's oath? To our law enforcement officer member of District 9 on the Legislative Committee, as a medically retired first responder myself, I understand how dangerous our world can be, and I thank you for your many years of service. I was excited to hear you suggest that we embrace the entire Bill of Rights, but was also appalled and further disappointed at the watered-down resolution that you all referred to our rights as privileges. As an officer, I'm shocked you didn't embrace the original resolution, which will protect the public and law enforcement officers from red flag laws. You must know that banging doors in the middle of the night wearing SWAT gear makes a homeowner jumpy. They're jumpy because they know that red flag laws rob citizens of due process, do not let the accused face the accuser, require no investigation, so probable cause is not demonstrated, making the search warrant illegal. They rob citizens of personal property and issue excessive fines and punishments. They rob the accused of legal counsel. They do not provide for a speedy trial, as the accused must wait for up to a year for their day in court with no guarantee of retrieving their guns. They go against the founding principle that we are innocent in this country until we are proven guilty. With so many violations of the Constitution, can you blame the pushback from the public? To the Commissioner from District 11, who's not here, I appreciate your love for the Federalist Papers, however baffled you would endorse such a poorly-written amended document. Our framers were very detailed in their language. To suggest that the amended resolution sits better with you than the original resolution defies my logic. You had a fantastic opportunity to step up and create a magical document to protect Sumner County. In closing, I had physical challenges, and I used to be terrified of guns, but I was always a constitutionalist. I left New York because of unconstitutional gun control and came to Tennessee so I can get over that fear and exercise my Second Amendment rights. I chose Tennessee because of conservative views, and I will fight to make sure this doesn't happen here. Owning a firearm has made me able-bodied again. I can't outrun a threat. I can't get up quickly if I fall, but now I have the confidence to protect myself. I will also never have to face abuse again. I'm trained to keep firing until the threat is neutralized, and I will never apologize for that.
All right, so Brandon Johnson, and then after Mr. Johnson will be Mr. Scott DeVos.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Brandon Johnson. I live at 555 Rose Cottage Circle here in Gallatin. According to the Declaration of Independence, we are afforded God-given rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These rights might include security, personal liberty, and private property. Equally, according to the Constitution, many of these God-given rights are protected by what we know as the Bill of Rights. Every Commissioner that has ever sat in this room and that currently sits in this room has taken an oath, and the second sentence of that oath says, "I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of Tennessee and the United States." And tonight, I ask that you remember that oath as you listen to and have heard citizens implore you to heed their concerns. The resolution that was proposed to the Legislative Committee on February 10 that declared us a second... us a second sanctuary county was completely trashed and thrown out. A blank piece of paper was adopted. Since then, a watered-down resolution has been written that states that the commissioners in the county support the entire Bill of Rights. Here's the problem with that. There are no active groups lobbying to take away my freedom of speech. There are no active groups fighting to take away my freedom for religion or my right to due process. And I could go on about the entire Bill of Rights. However, I cannot stand here in front of you tonight and say the same thing about the Second Amendment. There are groups actively working day and night to restrict and abolish the Second Amendment through additional legislation. And when I questioned a number of commissioners, I heard many excuses over the past week. "This is not happening. I've talked to lawmakers. No bills would pass. This is a feel-good measure. Voting for this would violate my oath of office." All of these, in my opinion, are weak excuses to remain on the fence in order to be reelected. And in response, I say it is happening in Tennessee because it happens on a federal level. It is happening here in Sumner County because we have people actively lobbying to remove that right. This is a message that we can send to Nashville and to Washington. To top it off, I and many others would personally love to know how saying that you will not approve of unconstitutional laws violates your oath to uphold the Constitution. Edmund Burke once said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." I'm here tonight because I don't want that to be my label or the label for this commission. I'm here tonight because I have the freedoms, I have freedoms that are being threatened, not by people in Washington and Nashville only, but by people in my very community. I'm here for a number of reasons. My freedoms, the freedoms of my friends and family that sit in this room. But I'm here for my daughter. I'm here for my unborn child. I'm here for my unborn grandchildren. I'm here because if we do nothing, my children and grandchildren and the children and grandchildren of every single person that sits in this room will pay for our laziness. To see that a few people, even on a local level, will not stand for their liberties terrifies me. A man that runs from his fears may find he has only taken a shortcut to meet it, and when you put getting more votes to be reelected above your primary priority to support the Constitution and these citizens, you might very well meet that fear and be without a seat come next election. In 1911, Turkey disarmed its citizens, and 1.5 million people died. In 1929, Russia disarmed its citizens, and over the next 24 years, 20 million Russians died. In 1935, China disarmed its citizens, and between the years of 1948 and 1952, 20 million Chinese died. In 1938, Germany, 6 million Jews. And in 1776, England intended to disarm 13 American colonies. The people stood up, declared their independence, yet here we are 245 years later being faced with the same problem. The rest of the Bill of Rights begins and ends with the Second Amendment. If we do not protect it, soon they will come after our other freedoms, our freedom of speech, our freedom of religion. They will violate our Fifth and our Tenth Amendments. This is a stepping stone to the rest of the Constitution. I implore you to support your, to support the original resolution and declare that no county assets will be used to enforce unconstitutional gun laws. I would also like to thank every single veteran that sits in here tonight and your willingness to leave the liberties of this country, the peace that you had here, to go and fight for those freedoms in a foreign soil. And I'm also sorry that you have to come home and continue to fight for those freedoms. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Scott DeVosse is on, is next, and then after him will be Mr. Stephen Rozek.
Scott DeVosse of 208 Harris Lane here in Gallatin, Tennessee. This is obviously a very emotional issue with a lot of emotional capital of people involved in it. But let's just take a moment and look at what we're considering, when we're considering a resolution. We've got multiple resolutions. Some have already been passed tonight. Some are still being considered. A resolution is defined as "a formal expression of opinion or intention made, usually after voting by a formal organization, legislature, club, or other group." Resolutions are made up of two different parts, and for those of you that have been reading through it, it might be a little confusing. The first part is called preambular clauses. They typically start with the words "whereas." They give background information on why the community is passing the resolution, and these clauses refer to specific aspects, the topic itself, the occasion for consideration, the Constitution, and recent incidents that are developments, such as legislation that threatens our civil rights or liberties. It's followed by the objective clause, which typically starts with "be it resolved," followed by an active present-tense verb like "affirms," "encourages," and it calls upon certain bodies to act. These clauses can contain the following aspects: recommendations of a specific action, statements of opinions. One of the resolutions that was on agenda tonight recognizes the accomplishments of a Gallatin High School honor student, and who here could possibly oppose congratulating and commending her? Another resolution, which we've already seen passed tonight, honors the memory of an officer who died in the line of duty. Everyone here stood up in agreement with this body that offered their heartfelt sympathies to the family and fellow officers. These resolutions are a formal expression of our opinion. We also have a couple of resolutions tonight to discuss. One officially submitted by the Legislative Committee that simply restates the oath of office that each commissioner took when they took their office, and that is to support the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. The other resolution to be considered is a much stronger statement, a statement of support for the Second Amendment, a statement that has already been made by over 40 counties in the state of Tennessee. Four of those counties have passed resolutions with the exact same wording as our resolution here tonight. It's a resolution. It's a statement. It's a statement that says to the politicians in Washington and Nashville that we feel strongly about our right to keep and bear arms. Our county resolutions are not laws and do not have any binding powers. This resolution is not going to give or take away anything. It is not going to allow criminals to have guns, and it is not going to be the end of our fight to protect our rights. That battle never ends. It has been said that there's no need for this resolution, that Tennessee will not pass any anti-gun laws, and I'm sure that's what the people of Virginia thought before the folks in DC moved to the suburbs and changed the voter makeup of their state. In today's Wall Street Journal, they announced that according to data collected by Moody Analytics, Nashville is the second hottest job market in the nation. We know that this will change the voter makeup of our city and state, but it will not change our culture. This is a statement of what we believe. This is a statement about our culture and what we value. This is a proactive statement to say that we, the people of Sumner County, do not want any rules or regulations that infringe on our rights to bear arms. I encourage everyone to remember this day, how each of these men and women vote. They are our representatives. We are not their servants.
While, um, while Mr. Rozek was coming up, I just remembered Chloe Brown, the Strick of Red Condition, she was sick and wasn't able to be here tonight. That's why we skipped over that on the agenda, so she'll come back next month, so. And then on deck here will be Ms. Amy Leeserf.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Rozek, 110 South Lawrence Way, Hendersonville, Tennessee. Presently, I am retired, but did serve as a state trooper for 20-plus years. Approximately a week ago, I emailed all Sumner County commissioners a copy of the following statement I'm about to read. "I understand everyone is extremely busy, but only five responses. I truly wondered if everyone had time to read it, and if so, had any questions about its content. Commissioners, I am fully in support of a resolution of the governing body of Sumner County, Tennessee, declaring Sumner County, Tennessee, a Second Amendment Sanctuary County, which was presented to the Sumner County Commissioners Legislative Committee by Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield on February 10th, 2020. The resolution must be passed 100% as submitted by Commissioner Mansfield. I will now speak about a prior resolution here in Tennessee, which was written more in the form of a proclamation than an actual resolution. The difference between a proclamation is a formal public statement or announcement, whereas a resolution is a firm decision to do or not do something, a statement of intent or a vow. The fact of the matter is that the prior resolution, 130401, dated on or about April 15th, 2013, had a positive intent at that time in response to the Sandy Hook, Connecticut tragedy on December 12th, 2012. One paragraph of that resolution incorrectly quoted the Constitution of the state of Tennessee, thus changing the total context of that resolution. This is articulated below. Note the words "bearing" with a B versus "wearing" with a W. The resolution, the paragraph states the following, "Whereas Article 1, Section 26 of the Constitution for the sovereign state of Tennessee further protects this fundamental freedom, leaving the right of the legislature to require, to regulate, excuse me, the bearing of arms, but otherwise not permitting the body to infringe upon this right." And the resolution went on for a good page. "The Constitution of the state of Tennessee, Article 126, actually states the following, that the citizens of this state have a right to keep and to bear arms for their common defense, but the legislature shall have the power by law to regulate the wearing of arms with a view to prevent crime." Totally different from the resolution. Recent history here in the United States, several states and commonwealths have taken it upon themselves to violate the Bill of Rights of the U.S. Constitution. The usurpations have been in several areas, not only the Second Amendment. Virginia, California, New York, New Jersey, Maryland, Illinois, Connecticut, Massachusetts are just a few of the prominent ones in the news today. Please take a moment and research their actions, especially of Virginia's legislature's proposed laws. It is mind-boggling that the rights of American citizens could be so easily eradicated here in the United States of America. How could any elected official not do everything possible in their power not to support honest, law-abiding, and God-fearing people? I implore you to vote in the affirmative on the current resolution submitted by Commissioner Mansfield and make Sumner County the 28th in the state of Tennessee that truly believes in protecting and maintaining our great constitutional republic. In closing, if I may quote a portion of President Abraham Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, November 19th, 1863, "That we have, we here highly resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth." Thank you.
Next up is Amy Leeserf, and on deck would be Mr. Brad Plumley.
Okay. I'm Amy Leeserf, and I live at 100 Spade Leaf Boulevard, Hendersonville, Tennessee. You've heard lots of positive speeches before me, so I'm just going to simply ask you to please vote and support the amendment that Commissioner Manfield has brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leeserf. Mr. Brad Plumley, and then on deck will be Mr., oh, excuse me, Mrs. Kimberly Overton.
Thank you. My name's Brad Plumley. I live at 685 Bug Hall Road in Gallatin, Tennessee. I'm the son of a crew military. My dad was in the Navy for 17 years. He was in paratroopers for three. Why he went from the paratroopers to the Navy, I don't know, but that's, we traveled around a lot, and that was pretty exciting as a kid. I have an uncle who's retired military. My wife has an uncle who's retired military. We have a number of officers in the family who are either current or retired. So I understand very much the, the idea of protection, and I appreciate the officers that we have in our community and around the nation. They're there for a reason. The thing is, is they can't be everywhere, and that's proven time and time again. That's why we have that right to bear arms. See, the thing is, is these people out here, they have rights. Y'all have privileges. You serve us. We don't serve you. That's privilege. That's not a right, because that can be taken away. Rights cannot be taken away. We live in a nation, as it's been said, we've, we're seeing rights taken away, one state at a time. The thing that bothers me in this, if we don't take a stand and we don't pass that resolution that was originally offered, you're putting people at risk, because if they do pass red flag law in this state, or any state for that matter, that where it has passed, the people, you put two people, groups of people at risk, the people who own guns and the people who are CNN, to take them away. You're putting them at risk. That's not right. That's a travesty, and that's something that should not happen. Another thing that shouldn't have happened is a resolution being changed and not having any public input and coming out of committee. Should never have happened. Should never happen in this house. We had something that was presented. Everybody saw it. Everybody saw it, and we're presented with something that nobody saw until after it came out of committee. That's not right. That needs to change, and this house needs to change that, and they need to do it soon. Because I tell you, there's a lot of people out here that are willing to take a stand and step in and do, run for election and make those changes that need to be made. I'm asking you not to pass the original one. I don't know if the, the original, or not to pass the, the one that was presented and came out of committee. I don't know if the original one can still be passed tonight. If it can, you need to pass that one. You really do. We've got counties all around, as been said, that has been said, that's taking up, taking a stand. They're locking arms. We need to lock arms with them as well. In Virginia, there's 90-some counties and cities that listed themselves as sanctuaries in the face of what's going on in that state. They have no worries. We have no worries. What are we worried about from the state? In the Constitution, we have, we have the federal, then we have the state, and then we have the people. That's how it works. That's what they intended. That's what they intended, and that's what we're here for. So again, I urge you to vote for the original, and let's put an end to this so that we can go on to regular business. Thank you.
So Ms. Kimberly Overton, and then on deck is Mr. Mike Connor.
Good evening. Kimberly Overton, 211 Hazelwood Drive, Hendersonville, Tennessee, 37075. I wanted to take this opportunity to address the commission and to voice my support for the original Second Amendment Sanctuary County resolution as presented by Commissioner Mansfield. I had a 10- I had attended the legislative committee meeting on February 10th and found it incredibly disheartening that there would be so much resistance to a resolution that only seeks to strengthen our resolve to stand together in defense of our constitutional rights. I found it surprising that the committee would rush through a proposed amendment to the resolution with very little discussion or reasoning. It was rushed through so quickly, in fact, that it passed without a single member of the committee having even known what the actual text of this amendment would say. Five members of the committee essentially rubber-stamped this, because as one person at the table put it that evening, "You all had the gist of what it would say." In my opinion, this was a feckless move, and many in attendance that night found it quite disturbing. After I had the opportunity to read the finalized amendment, I found it to be a watered-down generic version of the original proposal that instead of taking a strong stance on the preservation of our 2A rights sought to show all-encompassing support of the entire document, which many agreed actually weakened it to the point of absolute impotence. Commissioners, you have the opportunity this evening to send a very clear and strong message to our state legislators that these unconstitutional red flag laws will never be adopted and enforced here in Sumner County. In addition to violating our Second Amendment rights, red flag laws also violate the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, and Fourteenth Amendments to our Constitution. Although some of you may not believe that there is an imminent threat here in Tennessee, the writing is on the wall, and we need not look any further than Virginia to see that. It is our position that we must take a proactive rather than a reactive approach to defending these rights that so many have fought and died to protect. Similar resolutions have already passed in 41 counties across the state of Tennessee, several of which contain the exact same language used in the resolution that was brought before the legislative committee for consideration. A little over a week ago, I had emailed each one of you to express my concerns and ask for your specific reasoning as to why you felt that you could not support this resolution. Out of the 24 commissioners that I had reached out to, to date, only seven of you have taken the time to respond to those concerns. Six of you expressed your support to proceed with the original resolution, while one of you opposed it, stating very declaratively that our Second Amendment rights are not at risk in Tennessee. This commissioner further explained that they had been told by several of our state legislators that there was no chance that any bill would ever pass here that would infringe on our Second Amendment. I wish that I had shared these confidence and the assurances of our state legislators. I do not. It is exactly this type of complacency that will allow our rights to be so easily taken from us. They went on to say that resolution presented by Jeremy Mansfield at the behest of the citizens was nothing more than a feel-good measure with no legal basis. While it is true that the resolution is not legally binding, it does serve as a symbolic measure that reaffirms the county's commitment to the United States Constitution. At least one other commissioner, although they did not respond to me personally, was under the impression that regardless of how any resolution is worded, state and federal law would supersede it. While this may be true in many cases, to the best of my knowledge, it would never be true in situations where we are dealing with unconstitutional measures being imposed by any individual or government entity. In these cases, we have every legal right, and we have the duty to refuse to cooperate with state and federal officials. It had even been mentioned that support of the original resolution would somehow be a violation of the commissioner's oath of office. I had asked them to provide what specific violation that might be, and unfortunately, no response was received. It did, however, come to light that multiple commissioners have sought out copies of the oath of office that they had taken and signed, because quite apparently, they have either forgotten or simply do not have the knowledge of what the oath they have sworn to uphold contains. Again, I would strongly urge you to support the resolution as it was originally presented by Commissioner Mansfield, which contains very bold and decisive language that leaves nothing open to interpretation. I would respectfully request that you pass this tonight without further delay. I'm grateful for the opportunity to voice my concerns this evening, and please know that I am thankful to each of you, even those that I may disagree with, for your service to our county. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Mike Connor, and then on deck will be Mr. Bob Brown.
Mike Connor, 110 Buckhaven Drive, Hendersonville, Tennessee. Obviously, I had some pretty good bullet points here tonight because Ms. Hossi touched on every one of them, so I'm going to be pretty brief, and I apologize for my voice. Any resolution that refers to my rights as privileges is invalid. So what you're considering voting on tonight is invalid. Our forefathers did not settle for watered-down version of liberty, and neither shall we. So I encourage you to vote for Mr. Mansfield's resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Bob Brown, and then on deck is Mr. Ron Shepard.
Bob Brown, 587 Forster Treat Road, Hendersonville, Tennessee. The Second Amendment was based on the inalienable right from God to defend yourself, whether it's from a bear, mountain lion, or another human being. This right was given to the individual. However, it can be done corporately, giving rise to the phrase "a well-regulated militia." So there is the individual right to self-defense and a corporate right to self-defense. This right is not given by the government. It is given by God, and supposed to be protected by the government. However, we find ourselves in an impasse of the government trying to regulate or take away our government, our God-given right. The danger that we are protecting ourselves from may come from a felon, a gang, a crazy neighbor, or the government. For this reason, the founders did not give any restrictions on how to be able to defend ourselves. George Mason said, "I ask, sir, who is the militia?" It is the whole people except a few public officials. In early Virginia law, 1819, it stated that if you were 16 years old to 45, you were the militia for that particular locality, town, county, and et cetera. You were required by law to have the latest and greatest weapon with full accoutrements. This law applied to citizens and not whether you were in the militia. A good example today of a country following this law is Switzerland. They train at an early age, eight to 10 years old, as was recommended by Thomas Jefferson and John Quincy Adams. Up until the 1970s, when I was in Madison High School, we had gun racks in our trucks, and riflery was taught in PE. Can you imagine that today? This damage was done by the Gun Free School Zones Act of 1990, signed by George H.W. Bush, and the 2009 Military Regulations prohibiting military personnel from being armed on military reservations, signed by Bill Clinton. What good did that do us? Does that mean that if you're younger than 16 years old or older than 45, you'll be precluded from this well-armed? On the contrary. Samuel Whitmore, at age 80 years old, engaged in the battles of Lexington and Concord. Whenever anyone else was fleeing the British, Whitmore stood his ground. He loaded his musket, his two pistols, and strapped on his sword. He took out three British with his firearms and then engaged with his sword. He was shot in the face, bayoneted 13 times, and had his face cracked open with the butt of a rifle. When his neighbors heard the commotion, they came to find Whitmore in a pool of blood, reloading his weapon after the British had departed. He lived another 18 years, dying at the age of 98. President John Quincy Adams trained with the Massachusetts Minutemen at the age of eight years old. So whether eight or 80, it doesn't matter. Were women included? It was not in the law, but it was understood that in frontier life, husbands and wives were often separated, and protection of the home would often fall to the woman of the house. This premise still stands today, and there is no distinction in the law today either. In the words of a famous feminist who believed that firearms made men and women equal, wrote President McKinley concerning the Spanish-American War, "Dear sir, I for one feel confident that your good judgment will carry America safely through without war. But in case of such an event, I am ready to place a company of 50 ladies sharpshooters at your disposal. Every one of them will be an American, and as they will furnish their own arms and ammunition, will be little, if any, expense to the government." Very truly, Annie Oakley. For President Wilson, in World War I, she offered 15,000 women sharpshooters. She also stated, "I would like to see every woman know how to handle firearms as naturally as they handle babies." During our founding and early period, the government required citizens to be well-armed during this period at their own expense in order to respond to this militia call-up. There were no off-limits areas for weapons either. If you went to church, you went armed. Maybe we would not have the church shootings if that was required today. We're ready at my congregation if that happens. Local governments tried to enact no-carry laws for certain areas, but they were struck down by the courts. We're talking about long rifles and open carrying church. Bottom line, the Second Amendment is none of the government's business. It is God-given, and government will not regulate it.
Next up, we have Ron Shepard, and then on deck will be Ms. Kristy Cornet.
Hi. My name's Ron Shepard. I live at 637 East Main Street in Gallatin, and I want to say thank you to the commission for having this opportunity to speak. You know, there are very few things that we can agree on as a community anymore. But one of those things in this community, I believe we all agree on, is the right to bear arms. We're proud of our gun factory. We have one of the most modern gun manufacturing facilities on the planet. Very proud of that. But I don't believe that, as written, the first proposal is proper for our community. So why is that? Well, there's a lot of wherashes and such, and I'm not going to go through all that. What I'd like to do is focus on the meat of the language. The meat of the resolution as originally written talks about we, as a people, have the right to supersede the legislature and the courts to decide what is constitutional or not, and how to respond to that. Well, that kind of takes what I learned in high school civics and stands it on its head. The rule of law states, or the laws of this country and the Constitution of this country, delegate legislative powers to the legislative bodies, whether it be federal or state, and the courts interpret those by definition. And to pass a resolution that states that me, as an individual, can determine what I believe is constitutional and act upon that belief, kind of takes you back. That's going to confuse people. There are methods of redress. If you believe that something is unconstitutional and you have standing, there are procedures to go through with that. And by definition, if something is unconstitutional, it will not stand as a law. So there is no need to individually or as a county body have a resolution stating that. So you talk about it's not enforceable, it doesn't matter, it's just a statement of strong support, why pass it? Or why not pass it? Let's just pass it, put it in a shoebox, put it on the top of the shelf in the hall closet, and we're done with it. Well, the reason you don't want to pass the original resolution is that it is going to confuse people. Because again, that language states very clearly in that resolution that we, the people, meaning I, or any individual in this county or group of individuals, can determine themselves what is constitutional and what is enforceable. That could be misinterpreted, or that could be taken to the extreme, and our first responders are going to have to deal with that. Another reason why, oh, and the county is going to be on permanent record supporting that. Another reason why I don't support passing the original resolution is there are people working very, very hard in this county to bring high-paying jobs to this county. Not everybody here enjoys working for $12 an hour in a warehouse. You know, we would like jobs that can feed our families and not having to drive to Nashville to do it. So I think it will definitely impact economic development. So anyway, just to wrap this up, I've been told you never talk about a problem without presenting a solution. I'm a strong supporter of the Second Amendment, and I believe we can come up with a resolution that will satisfy this county's support for the Second Amendment, but we can strip away all that sovereign citizen language, and we can have something that actually conforms to the law. Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. All right, Ms. Kristy Cornet, and then on deck will be Mr. Ben Stuck.
My name is Kristy Cornet, 616 Fowler Ford Road, Portland, Tennessee. Good evening, Commissioners and fellow Sumner County constituents. This evening, I am here to support the resolution as amended, to support the entire Constitution, and to explain why and what Second Amendment sanctuaries are doing across our state. I will start by saying that I support the Second Amendment. My children participate in shooting sports with the Sumner County 4H program. I come from a long line of butchers, and my family has been, their livelihood has been supported because of hunters. I have family members who are police officers as well as sheriffs, and guns have played a role in protecting them. I am also in the process of getting my own handgun carry permit. I've been to Sumner Gun and Supply, and they have fantastic classes there. I am in no way supportive of removing guns from responsible gun owners. With that said, I personally have experienced suicide within my family, someone who was in crisis, and the firearm should have been secured or temporarily restricted until that crisis passed. Through due process, this is exactly what an extreme-risk protection order or red flag law would do. 61% of Tennessee firearm deaths are due to suicide. Bills such as this should be decided at the state level. Therefore, passing resolutions that are legally meaningless is not relevant to the county commission, meetings, and only shows that local bodies do not support lifesaving legislation involving extreme-risk protection orders at the state house. These so-called Second Amendment sanctuary counties are resolutions that blatantly announce that they would defy state law. Data should definitely be studied, but this is a state matter, not a county matter. We elect our legislators to represent us, and rather than defy the law, we should work hand-in-hand with our law enforcement to support and stand for gun safety and bear their responsibilities to keep our community safe. To successfully pass common sense gun laws at the state level, we must connect with one another, with our neighbors who have different views than us, instead of passing resolutions that shut down conversations. Our Sumner County law enforcement put their lives on the line each and every day. Many times, their safety is at risk, especially when on domestic violence calls or delivering restraining orders. They are on the front lines, and they see red flags long before anything is done. In the last 10 years, 10,224 Tennesseans died by suicide. We now see more gun death in Tennessee than motor vehicle death. From 2013 to 2017, Sumner County had 142 firearm deaths. 113 of those were to suicide. I've shared a lot of statistics, and here are some key takeaways. Gun violence exists in every single community, not just in big cities. It happens here in Sumner County. Gun violence is more than mass shootings that consume headlines, and gun violence is impacting our children at higher rates than ever before. The data is clear. And I want to end here. We cannot advocate for lawlessness, and that is what Second Amendment sanctuaries do. So let's work together to find ways that we can support both the Second Amendment as well as save lives. Thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Ben Stuck, and then on deck is Mrs. Mary Janong.
My name's Ben Stuckey. I live at 111 Westington Place, Hendersonville, Tennessee, 37075. And public speaking isn't my favorite thing, so I'll try to bear through. I was born in Sumner County, lived in Sumner County. I was born in Sumner County, lived in Sumner County the vast majority of my life. I actually went to church for a good while with Mr. Mansfield, and we played in worship band together for several years. I think we prayed together many, many times for several years, and I look back on it fondly. And yet, in our prayers, I think we disagree on this issue. I don't support the original proposal the way it's stated. I would support the amended version. And, you know, I recognize that we both perhaps feel strongly about it, and yet we disagree. I heard in prayer earlier that anybody who would disagree with this is something akin to an agent of Satan, or something of the sort. The people who support these laws care about their children and their safety the same as you do. And the majority, especially here in Tennessee, believe in the Second Amendment. I believe in the Second Amendment. I would fight with you if people, if I genuinely felt like people were infringing or plan to infringe on your right of the Second Amendment. What this is intended to do is to stop the enforcement of red flag laws, if they ever came to pass. Those are laws that would allow either the police or a family member to go before a judge and say that it's unsafe for this person to have firearms at that time. That's possibly an infringement of that individual's right for a period of time. When I, my feeling on this is that rights from God, which I agree with, come also with responsibilities. I would encourage you to consider what your responsibilities are to the community and to each other in regard to those rights. You have a right to freedom, which I strongly protect and also believe in. But if you abuse that right, your freedom can be restricted. You can be detained. You can be arrested. You can go to jail. You have a right to bear arms. I believe in that. If you abuse that right, if an individual is abusing that right, they have a responsibility. We have a responsibility to each other. That's what these red flag laws are encouraging. I have children that go to school here. I care about them. I believe that you genuinely care about yours. I would hate to imagine that someone's family members feel that their family is a threat to my child in their school, or that police know that someone is a threat to a child in a school, and that they can do nothing. People that have experienced that are the ones supporting these laws. I wouldn't look at them as disingenuous or the enemy. I would try to understand their experience and see how we can be in a community together. You know, already firearm-related deaths are the leading cause of death in children and teens. So I would say that we aren't today meeting our responsibility of this right that God has given us. We're called to more. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mary Janong. And then on deck is Virginia Hall Plunkett.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mary Janong. I live at 1100 Lock 4 Road in Gallatin, and I've lived there 30 years. What I wanted to say was I am here to support the Second Amendment that was written as it was by Mr. Mansfield. I've thought long and hard about this, and it's actually kept me awake at night thinking about what's been going on, not only here in our county, but in our country. I am a veteran. I joined the military when I was in my 30s, and it was because I volunteered, knowing that your kids, the kids that were younger than me were going out to battle for our country, that they needed our support to give them what they needed in that battlefield. And I did that on my own. I did that. I didn't have to do that. But when you have a red flag law that may go after veterans, how many of you are in here are veterans? Many of you, yeah. And the problem with that red flag law is that just because you're a veteran, there's a label, "Oh, you're crazy. You're a gun-fearing veteran. You're crazy." I work with mental health, and I understand what crazy is. But to use a law to go unconstitutionally against a person's rights is wrong. I get that there's problems with suicide in this country. But it's not legislation of guns that's going to fix the suicide problem. It's the mental health program that we have in our country. We don't have legislation out there to take care of those who have mental illness. We don't. We poo-poo it. We don't want to talk about it. We don't want to do any of that. We don't even want to talk to our kids about it. But to go after people's rights as citizens and take away their right to bear arms, that's wrong. That's really wrong. There's a thing called the law of the lid. I don't know if you've ever heard that. But it's a law that's in leadership, and it talks about how people in management, you have your employees, and then you have your leadership. And a person can only go as far as their leadership, okay? So in our community, we have the citizens, and then we have our leadership. But if the citizens cannot get through to the leadership, then we have reached the lid. We can no longer go beyond the lid. And we need to work on that. Because I personally was here last time with the tax reform issue, and we got nowhere. We got taxes, but we didn't get anywhere. And there's another thing that I kind of channeled myself. It's called slip-and-slide legislation. It's where our legislation slips in a rule and slides it by the citizens. And you don't even know it happened. And that's what they want to do with gun legislation. They want to slip and slide it into a rule, and you find out about it later. But really, what bothers me is that we are standing here today as citizens talking about something that we shouldn't have to talk about. The Constitution was written a long time ago. And you know what? Those guys were pretty smart. They pretty much knew what was going to happen in our future. Because you know why? You all are the same. You were same 200 years ago as you are today, because you wanted to defend yourself. You wanted to defend your family. And I've heard a lot of people say a lot of things tonight. Thank you. A lot of people say a lot of things tonight. And I'm so impressed with the people that came tonight and talked. But I ask that you guys look at the big picture. And the first resolution that was brought forth was strong, and it was a message. It was a message to our legislators to say, "Stop it. Stop it. Tennessee is not going to be a part of it." And I ask that our Commissioners pass the first one, not the watered-down version, because it has no power. It has no teeth. And that's all I got to say.
Next up is Ms. Virginia Hall Plunkett. And then on deck, it's Mr. Justin, you have to forgive me here, Justin Lee Sadler, maybe? Ms. Plunkett?
My name is Virginia Hall Plunkett. I live at 395 Devon Chase Hill, Unit 4604, here in Gallatin. Thank you for your time and attention. I moved to Sumner County three years ago, just four months after relocating to Tennessee. But I'm no stranger to the deep south, having been born and raised in northeast Georgia. My family has defended our homeland in nearly every armed conflict since the American Revolution. I too am a military veteran, and, excuse me. I too am a military veteran and earned a Medal for Marksmanship thanks to being taught from a young age how to respect, properly handle, and use firearms. I'm also a student of constitutional law. I received top marks in a required First Amendment case law class while receiving my bachelor's degree in journalism from the University of Georgia. In my coursework for my master's in public administration that I earned nearly two years ago, I also excelled in required constitutional case law courses emphasizing challenges to the Bill of Rights and the Fourteenth Amendment. My instructors were recognized by their peers as experts in constitutional law, and the knowledge I gained from them brings me to exercise my First Amendment right by protecting the Second Amendment. Two weeks ago, I witnessed the legislative committee's debacle when an unwritten, barely conceptualized amendment to the two-way sanctuary county resolution submitted by Commissioner Mansfield passed by a six-to-one vote. The amended resolution before you was poorly written after the fact by someone unaware of the clear distinction between right and privilege. These two words cannot be used interchangeably. The fact that the amended resolution repeatedly does so shows a chilling lack of comprehension, not only of basic English, but also of our Constitution and due process. This matters to me because my livelihood has become threatened by the precedent of Virginia's infringement of the Second Amendment rights of its citizens. And I love my adopted home too much to watch it descend into the same hell without a fight. I am by profession a realtor. I live in Gallatin and work out of Mount Juliet. My clientele currently ranges in location from Portland to Las Casas to Nashville. On easy days, I'll drive 50 miles in two counties. A challenging day could easily double both numbers. On any day, I'm likely to meet a total stranger and grant him or her access to an empty house or a vacant lot in a rural area, without guarantee of safety except for those afforded by my acquired situational awareness skills and my ability to defend myself. If I get in trouble, there is no expectation that help will arrive in time. I'm on my own. The damage to, or the danger to agents, excuse me, is very real. On February 4th, a colleague in Franklin I know personally was on her way to meet a man about listing his home. Just before leaving, she did a Google search because of an unprecedented sudden urge and learned that he had been charged with 40 counts of crimes, including incest and rape. Others have not been as fortunate. On December 31st of last year, Agent Monique Ball of Minneapolis was abducted from a home she was showing to Cedric Berry, a meeting arranged by his girlfriend Elsa Segura. Berry has been charged with kidnapping and killing Ms. Ball by a single gunshot to the head. Segura has also been charged with kidnapping. Commissioners, my very life depends upon the free exercise of my Second Amendment rights. I've been a concealed carry permit holder in four of the five states where I've lived in the past 30 years. I carry at every initial meeting, showing, an open house. Without the protection of my concealed carry firearm, I would not be able to do my duties without distraction. Several speakers have already talked about how many counties have passed two-way sanctuary legislation. I will not repeat it. But I will ask this question. Do citizens here really prefer their county be more closely aligned with Davidson County than Wilson? Based on the attendance here tonight, I highly doubt it. Therefore, I implore the Sumner County Commission to do its sworn duty to the people whom it serves by rejecting the amendment, the amended resolution, and passing the resolution as originally submitted by Commissioner Mansfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got Justin Lee Sadler's up, and then on deck is Mr. Kevin Beggar.
I am Justin Lee Sadler, 187 Lakeside Park, Hendersonville, Tennessee. Before I start, I would like to ask every Commissioner to remain off your phone and give them your undivided attention. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, good evening, and thank you for being here. I'd like to read for you the Second Amendment as written by our founders in 1789. "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." I understand some people might interpret this differently than myself, but I will tell you that nowhere in this sacred text does it mention hunting or sporting. It specifically says "necessary to the security of a free state" for one reason. Remind us that we are the last line of defense against government overreach. It is my understanding that some on the legislative committee didn't see the original resolution as necessary and maybe even found it hysterical. While my fellow resolution supporters and I think it to be extremely preemptive and extremely necessary. To take from Mr. Harris of the Tennessee Firearms Association, "The Second Amendment is a litmus test to see where a person stands on the entire Bill of Rights." Your watered-down general Bill of Rights rewrite of our original resolution is nothing short of a slap in the face to concerned patriotic citizens. Furthermore, in that amendment, your constant interchange of rights and privileges only shows your constitutional ignorance. Our rights are given by God.
Mr. Sadler, you refrain from those.
Our rights are given by God, not man. The only privileges up for debate tonight are your commission seats. The original resolution, as I said, is intended to be a preemptive measure against potential unconstitutional gun grabs. It was written this way because true Americans know that without the Second Amendment, all the others are fair game for government infringement. The legislative committee's condescending and dismissive remarks do not demonstrate any support or true understanding of the Bill of Rights, let alone the Second Amendment. How dare you attempt to belittle concerned citizens that come to you for help? Your opinions on the likelihood of such tyrannical laws is irrelevant. You are public servants. You work for the citizens of the great Sumner County, not the other way around. To refresh your memories, I'd like to give you a brief review of Tennesseans' undying love of this country and our firearms. The war for Texas independence would not have been won had it not been for Tennesseans and their guns marching with Sam Houston. In the Civil War, Tennesseans took up arms to fight the evils of slavery. Every war since then has seen droves of brave Tennesseans stand and fight, thus earning our state our proud nickname, "The Volunteer State." After World War II, veterans returned to their homes in Athens and Etowah, Tennessee, only to find a year later that they had to fight against a corrupt sheriff and county officials, and they won. Our sheriff has said he stands with us, and I dare say we have a few more guns than they did. I will offer you this chance to actually represent the citizens of your county to prevent another Battle of Athens, here or close by. I understand some of you might find these facts to be a little militant, and that's perfectly fine with me. We came seeking your help, not a fight. The original resolution was targeted directly at stopping more unconstitutional gun laws from hurting people of this county. If you fail to pass the original resolution, I only ask that you volunteer to be the first one on the stack when officers are sent door-to-door to enforce these illegal gun laws. We are putting you on notice. We want you to represent us. Should you fail to do so, we will do everything in our great power to make sure you don't see another term, 2022. If you're offended by my presentation, then you have some soul-searching to do. We're not asking you to finish 109 on schedule. We simply want you to use the powers entrusted to you by the citizens of this great county as a check against current and future threats to our God-given rights. Show us that you do truly support our Constitution. Take the powers we've given you. Adopt this resolution. Safeguard our rights.
Mr. Beggar, and then on deck is Mr. Billy Jones.
Kevin Beggar, 424 AB Wade Road, Portland. Chairman Pro Tem, you're doing a great job.
Appreciate it, sir.
Talk about a baptism of fire. But I've heard a lot of citizens talk about the Constitution and things like that, but this goes back much longer and older than that. This goes back, the issue that we have today is an issue that has been cast in stone by the Englishman back in the early days of English common law, okay? And it's typically referred to as the doctrine of the lesser magistrate. The whole premise of our Constitution was that that basically codified what the federal government could do. Everything else was then subjected down to the states, and the states were supposed to give everything to the local governments. Okay, that's the whole premise of the doctrine of lesser magistrates. Our founding fathers wanted our government to be as close to the people as possible. And y'all are seeing that tonight, right? This could have been easily diverted if we had just agreed to the resolution as it was originally written. And I'm here tonight to stand to say that I support the original resolution as brought by Commissioner Mansfield. But just to keep things in perspective, I heard a couple of people talk about, well, we should let the state handle that. The people in Florida, and I heard somebody talk about some other states, but Florida in particular, with a Republican state senate, and a Republican state house, and a Republican governor, passed the red flag law a few years ago. In those last several years, they've confiscated several thousand guns from law-abiding citizens without due process. It's going to come here, and if you don't think it's coming here, right on our southern border of Davidson County, we have a Republican senator, Senator Dickerson, who's proposing a red flag law. It's right on our southern border, folks. So I'm asking the people in this county commission to stand up as our forefathers did when they stood up to the king well before 1776, and they told that king that they were not gonna, they were going to stand between the citizens and his tyranny. I ask you to do that tonight. I ask you to do the right thing, but if you choose not to, tonight was a great night because I heard from some Realtors, "I'm tired of the cold weather in Portland. I'm looking to move south. I think Hendersonville or Gallatin fits my climate preferences much better." And I'm serious. I'm serious. God bless you all.
All right. Got Billy Jones. Billy Jones, and then on deck is Ms. Ruth Fennell. Fennell, I knew that.
Billy Jones, 6881 Highway 31E, Westmoreland. Thank you for, thank you all for allowing me to have the chance to speak tonight. I served proudly for 13 years in the Army and Tennessee Army National Guard. Deployed to Iraq in 2004 from right here in Gallatin with the 278th Armored Cavalry Regiment. As a veteran, along with those voting tonight, I took an unexpiring oath to uphold, support, and defend the Constitution of the United States. Anyone that has ever taken the same oath should be 100% in favor to protect our Constitution. Our rights as citizens are being threatened as we speak, not only here in the United States, but right here in Tennessee, and more specifically here in Sumner County. It starts right here with you taking a stand for the Second Amendment and voting yes for this resolution. If I was the opposition and I was trying to take away and infringe the rights that the Constitution gives us, I would take away the right to bear arms, and I would start with the veterans. The red flag laws that have been introduced in Tennessee and other states threaten just that. They will. Mark my words, if this resolution isn't passed, target veterans first. As opposition, this is what I would do. As veterans, we are trained, some of us highly trained, with the same or similar firearms they are trying to take away and infringe our right to own and possess. Who better to stand in opposition of our government while they try to strip each and every one of our rights away, one at a time? If they succeed in red flag laws and other infringements to the Second Amendment, they will continue to eventually dissolve our rights completely. What will be next? Freedom of religion? Freedom of speech, just as I am able to do tonight? Or just straight out, our freedom? If anyone stands against the Second Amendment or any portion of our Constitution therein, I consider them to be a domestic enemy. If you are a proud American, or especially if you are a veteran like myself, that took your oath seriously and still willing to stand up for that oath, then I strongly encourage you to vote for the full and original resolution introduced by Mr. Mansfield. And stand with me to protect our rights as we know them. The Second Amendment shall not be infringed upon. And so I will close with this. So I ask you tonight, please do not vote against this resolution, and have all my brothers and sisters, having had died in vain protecting the rights that they swore an oath to, just as you and I did. Thank you.
On deck, we have Cole Eddy.
My name is Ruth Fennell, 1049 Blue Jay Way, Gallatin, Tennessee. First of all, thank the commission. I've spoken here before, so I'm up in front of you again. I have a couple of questions. How many people in this room self-identify as a Christian? How many of you self-identify as a conservative? How many of you self-identify as a patriot? I'm seeing a lot of hands raised. So according to dictionary.com, a patriot is defined as a person who loves, supports, or defends his or her country and its interests with devotion; a person who regards himself or herself as a defender, especially of individual rights, against presumed interference by the federal government. So to me, that's why we're here tonight, to see who regards himself or herself as a defender, especially of individual rights, against presumed interference by the government. When you look back at history, 245 years ago, the Battles of Lexington and Concord occurred in 1775. They were often regarded as the start of the Revolutionary War. But these battles came about because the British marched upon Lexington and conquered Massachusetts to try to take arms and ammunitions that the colonists had stored there. After months of intimidation by the British, the colonists had had enough and took up arms against the British regulars. They resisted an abuse of their individual right to protect themselves and their families and their communities. The life we live today is because of those ancestors who were willing to take a stand and resist government tyranny. I'm not advocating violence, however, I think it is important that we look back through the lens of history to recognize that tyranny can present itself in many forms. For the men at Lexington and Concord, and women, we learn, it was attempted gun confiscation. It was a violation of their God-given right to self-defense. For American citizens today, it can be passing laws like they recently have in Virginia or even considering passing those types of laws that contradict what those patriots fought for. The Constitution very clearly states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Over the years, many have attempted to water this right down, from requiring permits to the outright banning of handguns by private citizens. Fortunately, those rights are continuing to be re-clarified for modern society, but as we see in Virginia, despite Supreme Court decisions, certain politicians will use every opportunity to restrict and even delete the Second Amendment. They will continue those efforts until and unless they are confronted with resistance, and sometimes resisting proactively is more productive than after the fact. Our forefathers put those amendments to the Constitution in writing because they wanted no confusion over the God-given rights and freedoms they had just fought so hard for, and they wanted nothing to be in question. George Washington and his army went without food, shoes, blankets, and some men even deserted because life had become so hard. When two men deserted, George Washington faced the dilemma of disciplining these deserters. He pardoned one, but hung the other. Why? Because he knew that he had to draw a line in the sand and take a stand. Otherwise, people would just take the easy way out. Thomas Paine in his 1776 pamphlet Common Sense described that situation. "These are the times that try men's souls. The summer soldier and the sunshine patriot will in this crisis shrink from the service of his country, but he that stands it now deserves the love and thanks of man and woman." Mr. Paine was describing those men who, when the snow started falling and a bad situation became harsh, left their ranks to return the horrors and the battles, leaving the battles for others to wage. Today, our easier access to food, shelter, even information than the Revolutionary War patriots makes it easy for us to just take those rights for granted and leave political battles for other people to wage. You see in front of you people who are not summer soldiers or sunshine patriots. You see in front of you people who are choosing to fight with words and actions rather than weapons. You see in front of you people who will stand now and who deserve your thanks and our thanks. Just like George Washington, leaders have to take a stand, choose a side, and draw a line. My question to you is, as leaders of Sumner County, will you take a stand just like those people did? Will you choose a side? Will you draw a line? And state clearly what your line is? Or will you be a summer soldier and a sunshine patriot? Will you take the easy way out? We have an opportunity to be at the forefront of this issue and to be leaders. Please vote yes on the original Second Amendment resolution. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fennell. We have Cole Eddy. And then after, after Mr. Eddy will be Jack Chapel.
Hello, Mr. Beggar. You're doing a fantastic job.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
My name is Cole Eddy. I live at 228 Vintage Circle in Hendersonville. I didn't write a fancy speech, but many great words have been said here tonight. I'd be willing to bet every person in this room has children and or grandchildren that they love and care about. I'm here to support the resolution that Jeremy Mansfield put forth originally. The problems that our nation has are unbelievable. If we look at the Democratic slate, every one of them want to come against our Second Amendment rights in particular. One has to ask, why would they do that? They don't offer solutions or even discussion about what the true problems are. The couple of ladies that have spoken about mental health illness is so right. I've dealt with mental health issues my entire life, from my parents to my own personal family, and our society does nothing for us. Here, take another pill, and it'll be okay. Our government, as it stands, can see that they are not going to easily come door-to-door and take everybody's guns away. That would not work out well for anybody involved. This attempt of theirs at red flag laws is not an attempt to make anybody safer because none of them, in any of the states, offer any solutions for anyone who would have committed suicide or been harmful to anyone else. They simply seek to take the guns away. None of them take knives away, none of them take pills away, none of them offer medical or mental health help. So what's their real aim? It's to get the guns away from the people who would stand on that Second Amendment that we have in our Constitution. You're sitting there on your front porch with a cold long neck when the local police department rolls up in your yard. Then another parks out by the street. Three officers approach you on your front porch and inform you that there has been a report you are drinking. "Well, I sure am," you say. "It's Friday night, and I plan to have another. It's been a long, hard week." "We need your car keys, sir," the young officer says. "What for?" you inquire. His reply shocks you. "We have to take your car to keep you from hurting someone." "How am I going to hurt someone sitting on my porch with a beer?" "Well, sir, your neighbor says you were threatening a trip to the beach this weekend, and you have been accused of drinking, so we have to take your car." "But I am not driving right now, and I have no intention of driving." "Sir, it remains that you have threatened to drive, and you are drinking, so we must take possession of your vehicle. You may come to the courthouse Monday for a hearing to determine if and when you may get your car back." This is the same as a red flag gun extreme-risk-protection-order law. Having your property, no matter what it is, seized because someone says you might possibly do something is a violation of the Fourth and many other amendments. There is no due process. There is no facing your accuser. You're going to miss those freedoms when they're all gone. Fight for them before they're all taken away. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chapel. After him will be Mr. Clark Shiflett.
I'm Jack Chapel, 1758 Long Hollow Pike, Gallatin. I'm a former U.S. Army officer of Vietnam service and a retired university professor and administrator. And so, since I'm used to dealing with university students, I try to make my comments very simple and easy to understand. When I left for this meeting, I got behind the wheel of my car, closed the door, and I put on my seatbelt, and I clicked that seatbelt. I imagine that every commissioner here, the sheriff and the legal advisor, also did the same thing. You get behind the wheel and you click your seatbelt. Now, we put on that seatbelt not because we're bad drivers, not because we think that the brakes or the steering or the airbags will fail, not because our car is dangerous. We put on the seatbelt because of the potential for something untoward to happen, somebody else to do something, because we want to be safe. That's what the Mansfield Resolution is. It is a kind of seatbelt to provide the citizens of Sumner County from the unexpected, to defend the citizens of Sumner County from the unexpected. It is an official expression in defense of the bad actions of others that can injure the innocent and unaware and take from us what is not theirs, take our liberty. The difference between the two resolutions is simple. One hangs there, and the other one gets put on. Just believing in a seatbelt does not make it work. And like a seatbelt, we won't need it unless something awful and unexpected happens, and then we will really need it to preserve something that the men and women of this country have said is more important than life and limb. It will help preserve our liberty. As commissioners, you just have to agree that our God-given rights, as articulated in the Declaration of Independence, affirmed by the Constitution, are worth defending, and that by action, watering down the Second Amendment resolution that was presented by Commissioner Mansfield... Commissioner Mansfield simply gives lip service and guarantees nothing. It is nothing more than a shell game. The Second Amendment is more important than clicking a seatbelt. It is among the rights that men and women, some of them my friends and brothers-in-arms, have fought and died for. They are the rights that are God-given. They are rights defended by heroes, challenged by tyrants, and abandoned by cowards. Thank you.
All right. We have Mr. Clark Shiflett. And on deck would be Ms. Barb Griffith.
Mr. Chairman, Sheriff, members of the Commission, and everyone out there. I first want to say thank you for allowing me to speak. My next thank you goes out to the members of what I refer to and what John Stuart Mill, an English philosopher, referred to as the loyal opposition. I'm not one of those tonight. I'm not one of the members of the loyal opposition, but I think it takes courage to get up here and to speak your mind, something that we've lost in this country, and to say what you think, even though the vast majority of the people are against you. So I thank you. I think you're wrong. John Stuart Mill said that truth could never be viewed in its entirety from one perspective. And I think you've hemmed yourselves into a single perspective without actually thinking about the greater picture. I heard someone tonight mention a political philosopher by the name of Edmund Burke. By the way, before I go any further, sorry, Mr. Chairman. My name is Clark Shiflett. I live at 597 White Road in Portland, Tennessee. How are you doing, Mr. Jimenez? We were reminded to the words of Edmund Burke, who said that the only thing necessary for evil to triumph is for good men. I'm going to change it to good people, for good people to do nothing. I've heard a lot said tonight specifically about the meaninglessness of a resolution such as the one that Commissioner Mansfield is proposing, the original one. This resolution has meaning, as evidenced by every person out there tonight, even the members of the loyal opposition. It has tons of meaning. Now, let's talk about that good people thing. Good people did something to preserve our liberties back in 1776, when the war was finally won. Good and very wise people, I heard someone say that they were pretty smart back then, ratified our Constitution around about 1789. And one of their first actions was to pass the Bill of Rights, again protecting our freedoms. And one of the very first rights that they enshrined in that Bill of Rights was the Second Amendment. Let's fast forward to June 26, 2008, in a case called District Columbia versus Heller. I believe that case is actually cited in the resolution as originally proposed. The legal citation, if you want to know, is 554 U.S. 570. By the way, I can't resist doing that because I'm a lawyer by trade. Yes, it's cold outside. You saw a lawyer with his hands in his own pockets. Just so you know, I've seen people, and I want to pause here for a moment, I've seen people from all walks of life come up here and talk about this, which should tell the Commission that this is an issue that transcends any socioeconomic class. This applies to the poorest of the poor, all the way up to the richest of the rich. By the way, I'm not one of those either, just so you know. Back to Heller. June 26, 2008, the Supreme Court of the United States decided to protect our individual right to keep and bear arms. They essentially, you know what, here's an old joke. You know what the Constitution means? It means whatever five people on the Supreme Court of the United States say that it means. They decided it's not simply a collective or a corporate right, it's an individual right. That's what gives all of your participation here meaning. That case was one of, I believe it was Justice Scalia that may have authored that opinion. So tonight, because this has such dramatic meaning, we are here to make our voices heard. We are here exercising peaceably our right to be heard. We are showing this body of commissioners just how important this issue is to every single person in this room. We are asking this body to affirm our Second Amendment rights through the passage of the resolution. No, you know what? As an attorney, I can tell you, it has no legal effect, but it says a whole lot to your state of mind. It bespeaks the intent of the people of this county. What does it mean to us? I'm going to tell you a little about myself. I'm married to a lady right there on the second row who's got a red coat on. Let me tell you, if you think I'm an ardent patriot, just talk with her for five minutes. Next month, we'll celebrate. I'm sorry.
That's the time. Your five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Pass it, y'all, as originally proposed.
Barb Griffith, and then on deck is Ethel Carrier. Ms. Griffith still here? She left, okay. We're about halfway through the speakers, just for you. No, I'm sorry. There's only one more after this.
That's it. Hi, I'm Ethel Carrier. I live at 1072 Lauderdale Lane, Bethpage, Tennessee. I love the Constitution and the Second Amendment and all the amendments, pretty much. You don't pick and choose. They've made us great for over 200 years. To put it plainly, a week and a half ago, I was looking out my window. It was 11:15 at night. I watched for my husband to come home. I watched for his car lights to come up the road, over the hill, up the road. And while I was watching out my window, I see somebody on my neighbor's yard with a flashlight, walking around, and at some point, he started to head up to the house, my neighbor's house. Well, that was pretty scary. But then I was thinking, well, maybe it's my neighbor. Well, it turned out it wasn't him. But my husband, the man heard my husband's car coming. He runs for the road and starts walking up past my house, my driveway, and up past my neighbor's driveway. I don't know where he went from there, but my husband passed him before he turned in my driveway. Now, that's pretty close to home. That's scary. I'm home alone while he's working. And every night, I'm looking out that window. And my neighbor, she has a habit of calling me when she hears something outside. And what do I do? I'm going to go running out. And I'm looking. Well, next time, I've got my gun with me and my German Shepherd. This is not going to happen to me. I want this county to be protected. I want to be able to keep and bear arms. And no red flag laws. They have been abused. People have died because of the abuses. And neighbors will do it too. And there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. We really need the sanctuary. We see what's going on in Virginia, California, New York, and all these other states. But when it hits close to your home, and you don't see what's going on outside your door in the middle of the night, and then you hear boom or something, then you're going to wish you had something to fight back with. Thank you.
Our last speaker here is Sheriff Sonny Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me the opportunity to address the Commission. Some 10 years ago, I took an oath of office and swore that I would uphold and defend the Constitution. A portion of that Constitution agrees that citizens have a right to own and possess firearms. Absent any lawful reason for due process to occur, I vow to continue my commitment to defend and protect the rights of the citizens of Sumner County. If you are a law-abiding citizen, free of mental disturbance, then you have no reason to fear that my deputies nor I will infringe on your right to keep your firearm. It makes no difference to me whether you have one gun or 100. A citizen has a right to protect their self and a duty to protect their family. I will continue to support the Second Amendment, as well as all the other amendments of our great Constitution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Without objection, we will take a five-minute break. 10-minute break. 10-minute break. We'll start back at 10 after 9:00. We'll start back at ten after nine.
I just wanted to thank you for all of this history lesson that you had this evening.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order. All right, we're going to the report of the chairman, announcements of the chair. Veteran's service reports are attached. Resolution 2002-01, approval of the official road list of Sumner County. Commissioner Mo Taylor, would you repeat for everyone your comment earlier about the missing pages?
Last month, we had it included in our packet and it had all, all the pages that were, the road list of Sumner County. This time somehow page seventeen got left out, but it's included in the, the packet that Ms. Maria put on her desk. And the reason I got in the queue to speak is, I brought up last month about the spelling of a road. Ransom is spelled mandrol, it should be spelled mandrell. I did my research and homework on that since the last meeting, and I moved to amend the road list and changed the, the spelling of ransom mandrol road to ransom mandrell road.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's get the motion on the floor. So, first, so you want to make a mo-
Yeah, I got ahead of myself, didn't I? I moved to approve the road list.
All right, so we got a motion from Commissioner Mo Taylor? Second, Mr. Rhodes. Okay, now, I'm sorry, back to Mr. Taylor.
I moved to amend the road list of Sumner County, Tennessee, by, on page seventeen, changing the name ransom mandrol, M-A-N-D-R-O-L, to ransom mandrell, M-A-N-D-R-E-L-L. And I so move.
So, it's the motion for an amendment to change the spelling of mandrol to mandrell. Second, Commissioner Graves. So, we're gonna go ahead and vote on the amendment? We'll go ahead and do a vo, a voice vote. So, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, amendment passes. So, now we're back to the resolution. Yes, Commissioner Taylor?
I spoke with E-911 because this has a potential effect on him, and she simply asked that we forward the amended road list to her and to the Highway Department, so they, when, you know, the proper, everybody gets the right name and the right spelling.
Actually, the Highway Department will have to amend the road list, because that's their, their form.
She, well, she said we could do it here.
Well, I, no, no, I'm not saying we can't do that, but the form needs to come from the, the form needs to come from the Highway Department, because that's a, that's a particular form they fill out.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Hinton?
Just want to parrot some of what he said. The, there is a procedure, there is a protocol. The, the mandrol and the mandrels, I haven't, I've known the mandrels, and it should have been mandrell all the time. I don't know how it got messed up. He's right about that. But there is a protocol. More of a protocol than just coming here and making a motion. Apparently, he started the protocol. So, if you, if you got a notion on changing a road name, you can't do it on this floor. You got to go through a protocol. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Okay, so now that we're back to the main motion as amended, all in favor? Any opposed? So, that passes unanimously. Moving on, 2002-02, sidewalks, city of Gallatin, grant of sidewalk easement, South Foster Street. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Ring, second, Mr. Goode. See no one in the queue. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? So, that passes unanimously. All right. We've already done the certificates of recognition. So, going down to 2002, the approval consent agenda items, before we vote on that, I know we've approved this item of the agenda, but without objection, 2002-12, item number six there, the meaning of the Sumner County Personnel Policy for the Sumner County Sheriff's Office. The attachment that's in our packet needs to, there was an updated version, so we went, we would like, without objection, to pull this item off the consent agenda and bring it back next month. So, without objection, we go ahead and do that. So, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Report of county officials, written reports to be filed by county officials. And now we're on to the notaries, public election, and surety bond approval. Is there a mo, motion by Mr. Hinton? Second, Ms. Eccles? Put it on the board?
Notary applications on the board. It's Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-one votes in favor, the notary applications are approved.
Okay. I got you, okay. So, moving back to the consent agenda, I apologize here. So, we, we pulled that item off, so now I need a motion for the, to approve the consent agenda items. Motion by Mr. Nipper, second, Ms. Eccles. All in favor? Any opposed? So, that's passing unanimously. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on, report of the standing committees, committee on committees, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, committee on committees met tonight at regular scheduled meeting at 6:30. We had two agenda items. The Highway Commissioner, there was a reappointment, but the county mayor from Tom Neal, citizen of Gallatin, it was unanimous, I so move.
Motion, Mr. Goode, second, Mr. Ring. No one in the queue. All in favor? Any opposed? So, that's unanimous? Anything else there?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry about that. I was waiting on your recognition. Sorry about that. Board of zoning appeals, there was a reappointment, Maslin Holt, Macklin Holt, I apologize. It was unanimous, I so move.
Motion, Mr. Goode, second, Ms. DeWitt. No one in the queue, all in favor, say aye? Opposed? So, that's unanimous? Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, at current, we are, we moved our meeting back, but due to the commission meeting going to the fourth Sunday, fourth Monday next month as well, currently, there's no business on the upcoming agenda, so if that's the case, we will cancel, but we'll let the body know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. Education Committee?
No reports, Mr. Chairman.
No report? Highway Commission? No report? General Ops? No report? Emergency Services? No report? All right. We've got, over to the Legislative Committee. Mr. Ring?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2002-03, a resolution declaring our firm's support for the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and the promises and commitments made to, to our country and expressing to our state delegation, or delegates, that we are opposed to any legislation that would limit these rights, I so move.
We got a motion by Mr. Ring. Second, Ms. Eccles. All right, go on. Yes, Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you notice, this is the first time I have not worn a college shirt for our commission's meeting. I trust the chairman will forgive this minor deviation of decorum, but I have a point to make in wearing this particular shirt tonight. Because I'm routinely asked my position on many topics, I also consider wearing another shirt that succinctly, more eloquently than I, parallels my position on several important topics. That shirt states in big, bold capital letters, starting from the top, pro-God, pro-life, pro-jobs, pro-military, pro-Israel, pro-Second Amendment, pro-law enforcement, and in bright red letters, pro-American. That shirt is great in its brevity and clarity, and it's also great that it includes a picture of our current and future president's picture on it, but leaves out two of my most important pro-stances. I'm also pro-Tennessee, in particular, pro-Summer County. For those who cannot see my shirt, it says, "A well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, rights of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, I teach criminal justice at Beach High School. I will not sub, subject this body to a boring Bill of Rights lesson, as I often do to my students, but for those who would disagree with my stance on this subject, it bears repeating that interpretation of the Second Amendment must be made in, in the context and the time in which it was written. I offer the following brief facts. To those who would say that the Second Amendment only applies to militia, I would ask them to understand the events that led up to forcing the Patriots to fight against the tyranny of the British King and declare our independence due to the many grievances suffered by the colonists. This notion of the military forced the nation rested upon the whole body of the people was clearly in the mind of George Mason, the father of the Bill of Rights, who said in 1788, "I ask who are the militia? They consist now of the whole people." British military historian Eric Robson acknowledged, restricted to little more than the ground they stood on, the British increasingly found subsistence a matter of considerable difficulty. That was not the result of Washington's violent army camped at Valley Forge, or for so many years across the Hudson from the British in New York City, but rather the American guerrilla militia that from local homes and farms made life in the British Army a living hell. Every small detachment was legitimate prey for the Americans. Historians will never know how many of these small skirmishes there were, but only glimpse them over the landscape, realizing that they formed the real reason for the low British morale and eventual defeat. Thus, we see the experience of the Revolutionary War confirmed in the minds of our founders, the teaching of the Whigs. An armed judiciary was both a check on domestic tyranny and the most desirable form of national defense. Now, to the matter at hand. I agree with Resolution 2002-03 that declares Sumner County supports the U.S. Constitution and our Bill of Rights, but this resolution, although well-intentioned, does not reflect most of my constituents' wishes in establishing a resolution that will unequivocally declare that citizens of Sumner County will not comply with extra constitutional actions from any government or body that infringes on our right to keep and bear arms. This commission tonight should focus on our Second Amendment rights, and that is the reason I am wearing this shirt. Sumner County must stand with the other 24 counties in Tennessee that have already passed Second Amendment, Second Amendment sanctuary resolutions. A few years ago, the city of Gallatin achieved international acclaim when Beretta, the world's oldest firearm manufacturer, relocated here. Barrett Firearms Manufacturing, the world leader in large caliber rifle design and manufacturing, is just down the road in Rutherford County. SSCY Industries LLC, which specializes in making pistols and sidearms, now has a 350-job, 150,000-square-foot facility in Maryville. That 25, 22.5 million plant is their primary manufacturing facility. This commission should be the leader in demonstrating to our state legislatures and the rest of the country that our county in Tennessee is now and will remain a solid pro-gun state. Furthermore, the time to act is now. We cannot be complacent and say that anti-Second Amendment legislation could not pass in Tennessee. Just look at what's currently happening in Virginia, a solid red state until the last election. On our county's border, our state's biggest city, Nashville, has demographics that are quite dissimilar to Sumner County. Davidson County residents will continue to relocate to Sumner County due to our high quality of life. Unlike the other rights in the Bill of Rights, such as free speech, assembly, petition, religion, et cetera, the Second Amendment is under attack every day somewhere in the United States. This attack is well-funded by left-wing billionaires that surround themselves with armed security but, but cannot see the hypocrisy in denying the same protection to ordinary citizens. I've been involved in law enforcement for nearly 25 years in this county and have always supported law-abiding citizens being armed. In fact, I assisted for several years in teaching the women's firearms training class at Henderson Police Department. Also, I'm a state of Tennessee certified handgun instructor. In addition, I am currently a voting member of the NRA and have been a member for many years. I trust this information makes it abundantly clear that I will not support any law that would unconstitutionally restricts the rights of law-abiding Sumner County citizens to keep and bear arms, or limits the rights of due process, or impedes the ability of an accused to confront witnesses against themselves. In short, I will stay true to my oath to protect and defend the constitutions of the state of Tennessee and United States of America. In this spirit, Mr. Chairman, I move to replace Resolution 2002-03 with the original language of the Second Amendment submission to the Legislative Committee on 10, 21020, that is included in our package.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a basic amendment to replace this one with the original one. Who was the second? Commissioner Mansfield's second. So, we'll, let's put this on the board. We'll need 16, is that right?
Discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, discussional amendment, okay. All right. Ms. Eccles, amendment or original?
Original.
Okay. Commissioner Chris Taylor?
Amendment.
Okay.
I strongly believe in the Second Amendment. I've been a police officer for 28 years. I had the privilege of being on handpicked narcotics units and SWAT team. For the early part of my career, I fought people every night over guns. We went through the door hundreds and hundreds of times on search warrants. I was on a street-level unit that literally locked up 2,000 people in one year, and almost every one of them fought us. I fought men over guns that were trying to kill me and my teammates, more times than I can remember. I had the privilege and the blessing of being a supervisor after that in the police department, and I got to be over units that were responsible for catching the wooded rapists, serial killers, starting the child pornography unit, checking, catching child predators and rapists in general. I understand exactly what it means when we say there are bad people in the world. There are evil people in the world. Make no mind, no mistake about it. I've exercised my Second Amendment right every day for the past 28 years, but probably for a little bit different reason. And every one, I think, is personal to each person. I don't want to minimize anybody's experiences of their life. But I carry it every day because I make sure nothing bad happens. Couple of years ago, I got a little lazy because I was getting a little fat, and my gun pinched me when I wore it, and my wife reminded me, she said, you know, we go places, and if something happens, and you could have stopped it, that's on you, because that's what you're supposed to do. She was absolutely right. So, for the past 25 years, I've carried a gun to church, I've carried a gun to dinner, I've carried a gun everywhere I go to watch my kids play. When I coached my kids, I had a gun. I've done everything I can to make sure that people are okay around me. And when I say it's important for the Second Amendment, I mean, I have it every time in here, every committee meeting, because if somebody comes through and something bad happens, I'm gonna make sure I'm between you and that bad thing, because that's what I'm supposed to do. That's how strongly I feel, that I carry my gun every day to make sure nothing happens to anybody around me. That's my choice. Calling God, put in my heart. That's how I feel about it. I think everybody should be allowed to carry a gun. That's not crazy and doesn't have a felony record. And there's a reason for that, because I fought lots of felons over guns, sent lots of people to prison. I respect the fact that you feel strongly about the Second Amendment. Please respect the fact that I do, and that I do it every single day. And I'm, again, not minimizing what anybody in this room does, but that's the weight I carry every day on the side of my hip. So, I understand what it means to be armed. I also understand what it means for the First Amendment. When I was a young officer, my patrol zone was Tony Sudicum, J.C. Napier Holmes, it's housing projects at the end of Lafayette. Worked there for three and a half years before I went to the narcotics unit. We were down there one day making arrests, and people weren't always particularly fond of me being there or police, and they had some choice words for us, as we were arresting dope dealers at the time. And one of the officers I was with when we were leaving was complaining to our sergeant, who had been around for a while. He was, he was an older cat, and he had been a police officer in the 70s, so he had seen some things. And the guy was whining, he's like, "Why do we have to take that, da-da-da? We ought to be able to lock them up." And I remember this was early '90s, and my sergeant looked at him, and he was a great guy, Mark Garfoll, and he said, "If you can't handle somebody yelling at you, go work in Bellevue where everybody's nice." He said, "But more importantly, if you can't defend their right to yell at you, give me that badge right now, because you don't deserve it, and you don't understand what it means." And that stuck with me as a young officer, of how important it was to protect the First Amendment, because I'd never really thought about it that much until that time. Well, since then, the next 20-some-odd years I was on the department, I was at picket lines for unions when you had Firestone. I worked, actually, undercover there. I've stood in front of people that were saying really hateful, awful things behind me, but they had the right to. I didn't agree with it, but I was going to make sure they had that right. And then, at the same time, I had people standing in front of me spitting and yelling at me for defending their right. And I'm okay with that, because that's important to me. You have the right to say it. I get trashed on a regular basis on social media. That's your right, and I'm not going to say anything about it, because you should be allowed to say what you want to say. I firmly believe that. Anybody that doesn't think that there's a religious attack on our rights, just Google it and check. You have synagogue shootings across the country. You have people actively trying to take the scripture that's written on buildings, the Ten Commandments that's put up in halls, and remove them. Our religious rights are constantly under attack. Our First Amendment rights are constantly under attack. All of our rights are under attack at different times. I'll make it more personal. The Antioch Church shooting that happened in Nashville, I was the captain that day. So I went out and I was the command over that. And I had to see all those parishioners sitting over there and the horrid look on their face because they realized something as safe and as special as church had been taken away from them that day. And I'm glad that the people that were there could prevent the attack or at least stop it before it got any worse. And I don't doubt that if maybe one or two people had been armed, it might have stopped a little bit sooner, a little bit better than it was. So again, I support the Second Amendment. I support also the right to religious freedom. I support the First Amendment, which gives you speech. And I'll tell you again, on Virginia, yes, our rights were under attack to the Second Amendment, but you know what stopped it? It wasn't the Second Amendment, folks. It was people showing up and the right to assemble and the right to speak that brought attention to it. That's what shut it down. I think our forefathers were God-inspired men that took the time, and when they wrote the Bill of Rights, when they wrote our Constitution, they understood that it was interdependent on each other, that those rights supported each other and carried on, that you can't have one right without the other, that the Second Amendment upholds the First Amendment and vice versa. So I'm going to ask you, please, I support the Second Amendment. I also, I support the entire Bill of Rights. I support everybody's right to be able to choose their religion, to speak their mind, for the freedom of press, the rights against unreasonable search and seizure, due process. Those are all included. No one right is greater than the other. If it had been, it would have been that right and then the Bill of Rights, but they're all included. So I'm going to ask everybody in the room, please, as commissioners, include the Bill of Rights in whatever you do. However you change this, I'm fine with it. Again, I support the Second Amendment, so I'm good if we say that. But the speakers tonight said it best. They said, "One, this is a statement. It has no legal support. It can't do anything. It can't stop anything." The speakers tonight said that, speaking on behalf of it. So I'm going to say, if we're going to make a statement, make it big. Make it about all the rights. If you want to change it, take out the part that says "privilege." I agree. Put in "rights" in there. And on the last statement where it says that we are opposed to any legislation which would limit these rights, make it stronger if you need to. Make us a sanctuary county for all freedoms. It doesn't have to be just the Second Amendment. It can be everything. If you're going to make a statement, make it big, folks. I've spent my life defending those. I've got broken bones, surgeries, all kinds of stuff, because I believe in people's rights. I believe also in the right to protect you. All I'm asking is, however you do it, keep that in there.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Rine, on the amendment?
Originally, the original motion, but I lost due to the amendment.
I agree with much of what Commissioner Taylor said. I also agree with much of what the people who spoke said. The Second Amendment is extremely important. I teach it all the time. I teach American government civics. I have over 200 students every single year that I teach government to. I talk about every one of the Bill of Rights. I talk about the Constitution. I don't know that any right is superior to any other right. I do tell my students that if we lose the Second Amendment, then we will lose our other rights. I agree with that. However, the problem with the original resolution, which I have, is it tells us to violate the law. Our oath of office says we are to defend, to support and defend, the Constitution of the state of Tennessee and the Constitution of the United States. One of the things I tell my students is we have a rule of law in this country. Everyone is required to participate and support the rule of law and to be abided by the rule of law. This resolution tells us we are not going to follow the law. Now, I will tell you. I will tell you, if there are threats to our Second Amendment or any other rights, I'll be in Nashville opposing it just like anybody else would. I'm, I've had... People on social media have said things about me they don't even know me, okay? If you are going to criticize somebody for their belief and for their opinion, do that. But too many people are criticizing, and this particular issue, are criticizing the personalities and the character of people on this county commission. If you're going to question my character or the character of anybody else on this county commission, do it face to face, like a man or a woman would, and don't do it behind the scenes on social media, okay? Now, people are giving us biographies, just for your information. I had about a half a dozen ancestors, direct ancestors, who fought at battles of Lexington and Concord. My family came to this county as a result of a land grant from ancestors of mine fighting at Kings Mountain, which was probably the most decisive battle in the southern part of the United States during the American Revolution. You don't tell me I don't support or defend Second Amendment or any other part of this Constitution. Obviously, you've never been in my government class. I spend multiple days dealing with the Constitution...
Commissioner Rine, just to remind everyone, please direct your comments to the chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I spend multiple days dealing with the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and I'm a strong supporter of the Second Amendment and the First Amendment and all of them. I believe I cannot support this resolution because of the fact that it tells us we are to violate state law, the original resolution. We, as a county commission, are subordinate to the state. We are not allowed to pass any resolution that violates state law. Now, you may think, anybody in this room may think that a red flag law is unconstitutional. I may think it's a red flag law is unconstitutional. None of that matters. All that matters is whether or not the Supreme Court of the United States rules it unconstitutional. We can fight it all we want, and I agree, I mean, I agree, we need to fight it. However, nobody in this county is taking away your rights to own a gun. Nobody in this county is taking away anybody's rights. Everybody on this county commission took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States and the state constitution, and that's what we are doing, okay? I cannot vote for the original resolution with the wording in here that tells us we must violate state law if we pass this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rine. Commissioner Mo Taylor on the amendment?
I support this amendment. I supported it when it was before the Legislative Committee. I stood before the Legislative Committee, and I voiced my support for the original resolution. I remember when my first job's out of college, I was taught, "If you plan, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail." And that stuck with me. If you fail to plan, you plan to fail. Well, sometimes you have to plan for the worst and hope for the best. And with this resolution, I saw it move through different states. I had constituents reach out to me months ago wanting this brought forward. I said, "It's in the process. It's in the process. It's been in the process in Tennessee for a little while now." So when it was submitted, of course, I was in favor of it, and I'm still in favor of it. And I want to talk a little bit why I'm more in favor of the amended and the original resolution that we added to the agenda tonight. So if we can pass it twice, that's good. In the resolution that came out of the Legislative Committee, it was horrible language, in my opinion, because our Constitution affords us rights, not privileges. Rights, not privileges. And I want to quote a United States senator, not from this state, that reminds us, "We should never forget the Constitution wasn't written to restrain citizens' behavior. It was written to restrain the government's behavior." So that's a United States senator. I'm not supposed to mention names, so I won't mention his name, but I'm quoting him. So the way I see this Second Amendment resolution, and I look at things different. Everybody here knows that. I've been here for 10 years almost. I mean, you know, I'm different. Well, as I see this move across states, and our state most especially, this sends... Think about this. If 90 counties in Tennessee pass this resolution or similar resolution, it sends a message, loud and clear, because it's got media coverage. There was media here tonight. People's listening to it. People's talking about it. It says, "Hey, Mr. State Senator. Hey, Mr. State Representative. 90 counties in your state," says they're going to stand up to you if you even think about opposing these red flag laws. 90, ever how many? If it's a supermajority, I think that'll have some impact, unless we lose those seats in the elections, which can be done. Elections have consequences. You either make those consequences in your favor or against your favor. The people spoke. I listened. I support the original resolution. And that's, I mean, overwhelming majority of the people that reached out to me over the last few months, and most especially the last two or three weeks, have been in favor of this. So I have a history of standing with them, and I'll do it tonight.
Mr. Hyde?
Mr. Chairman, I did a lot of thinking about this amendment, and over a period of time, I actually prayed about it and thought about it and reasoned about it. And I thought in my mind, and even talked to a commissioner here about that, I thought, "Okay, if the original motion doesn't pass, maybe I should vote for the other one for something, so that it would just be nothing otherwise." But then, as I thought about it and prayed about it, really, what this Second Amendment is, is nothing, because what these people, the citizens of Sumner County, have overwhelmingly asked is for us to state our opinion on the Second Amendment. We don't, I don't think that I have the right to change what they have approached us to handle. And in all due respect, they didn't approach us to pass something on the Bill of Rights. They approached us about the Second Amendment that is under fire. And I, believe it or not, growing up in Nashville, I started my association with the NRA as a junior NRA club member at Cone High School. Can you believe that in a public school in Nashville? But that's a fact. And have been associated with the NRA for many, many years. But I'd like to make a couple of other statements in regard to this. And due respect to anyone else that said anything, I have grandparents that have gone back to Jamestown, Richard Hyde, Henry Hyde of Hidesbury Pike in Nashville, Davidson County, one of the first settlers in Davidson County. These people could care less. They don't care what my ancestors did, but they do care what Merrill Hyde does, because I'm here representing them. And there are two forms of representation. One form of representation that people typically believe is that they elect you, you go and do the best job you can in that office. There are others, like me, that really believe that you are elected, and you do the very best you can to determine what the people want that elected you, and you go and vote that at a body such as this. And I can very well tell you that in my district, in the eighth district, try going to a barber shop there and getting a haircut without some good conversation about this. One of the first things, and I'll make this very brief, but one of the first things that Fidel Castro did in Cuba was to force the people to turn their guns in. And the statement that he made was, "You'll no longer need your guns because the government will take care of you." Well, they sure did, you know? The island is in poverty now. And secondly, in response to a statement that this is lawless or could be lawless and that we don't have the authority to do this, let me remind you that our lawless third president of the United States made this statement. "The strongest reason for the people to keep and bear arms is as a last resort to protect themselves against tyranny in government." Thomas Jefferson. And then remarkably, I'll close with this. Rand Paul made a great statement that I really got off Facebook. He said, "We should never forget that the Constitution wasn't written to restrain citizens' behavior. It was written to restrain the government's behavior." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. All right. Mr. Wright, on the amendment or main motion?
Main motion.
Main motion, okay, go ahead, sir.
I live in a very rural area. I don't have the privilege of some of these folks who live in the cities of Gallatin, Hendersonville, Goodlettsville, Portland, even Westmoreland. I depend on the sheriff's office to respond to anything that happens there at home, just like several of my constituents out here. We live where we do by choice. We enjoy it out there. I'm not making an excuse for the sheriff's office. We have a larger law enforcement presence than any time since I've lived where I'm at, and that's been for almost 50 years, folks. What I'm trying to get at is even though we have a larger law enforcement presence in the county than we ever have, the response time is still several minutes. It's just how it is. In that timeframe, when somebody comes through my front door when I'm not home, if they make it past the Belgian Malinois and the 90-pound German Shepherd, they don't want to meet my wife. Some of you may have seen her shoot, and you'll understand what I'm talking about. What I'm trying to get at, at times, we have to take care of ourselves. To me, that's what the Second Amendment is about. Now, I've heard Commissioner Taylor speak. I'm a brother-in-blue, too, and I'll walk through any door with you. And I'll walk through any door with you. And that goes for any law enforcement officer in here. I have trained with just about every one of them who is in this room right now. Would they be there if I needed them? Yes. Is it going to take them a few minutes? Yes. What does this resolution, what does it state? It makes a statement for our Second Amendment rights that is given to us, it's granted to us. It's not a privilege, folks. It's a right. That's all I've got.
All right. Mr. Mansfield, amendment or the main motion?
I'll do the amendment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the Bill of Rights with amendments like the First and Second Amendment, as has been stated here several times, does not provide us with rights. Does not give us... I mean, does not give us privileges, or even rights. Instead, what it does, it prohibits the federal government from infringing on those rights. And the difference is that these rights are natural, they're God-given. These rights pre-exist government, also known as natural laws. So, basically, it's important to clarify that these rights, which are held by all citizens and human beings from the moment of birth, are protected by the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights of that Constitution. They are not privileges. Privileges can be taken away, and rights cannot. The problem of what is happening is there are unconstitutional red flag laws. And we're not talking about constitutional laws. We're not talking about things that are lawful. About things that are unlawful is the entire premise of what we are here about tonight. So, the unfortunate thing is that red flag laws do violate the inherent rights of natural-born United States citizens, as well as violating the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights of that Constitution. Therefore, because red flag laws do that, they are not enforceable. They are unconstitutional, and I feel that they should be strongly condemned from every Hall of Government in this great state of Tennessee. Now, there were several things talked about mental health tonight. What people aren't talking about is that Tennessee already has mental health laws on the books. Red flag laws are not about safety. They are about gun grabbing. Make no mistake, because that is what has been implemented and instituted across the nation. These mental illness laws in Tennessee already allow a mental defective person to be reported, detained, and mentally evaluated. If they're found to be mental defective, the courts will remove all firearms from that person's home, and they will no longer be able to legally possess a firearm. We've already got laws for that. But the difference is, mental illness laws protect the constitutional rights of the individual. Red flag laws violate citizens' constitutional rights. And that is a problem. That is the biggest distinguishing difference between mental health law and a red flag law. Red flag laws do not solve the problems of mental health. They just grab guns. And that is really all they are. So, also been stated tonight, you know, over several numbers, but I think around 42, approximately, Tennessee counties have passed Second Amendment sanctuary laws or resolutions in Tennessee. It's been stated, there are four of them, counties, that have passed the exact same worded one as citizens asked that I put forward, emailed on January the 28th. It's been almost a month to the Legislative Committee. Plenty of time to read over it. So, what these explicitly, these resolutions do say is that they condemn any language that speaks to unconstitutional laws. They basically speak against red flag laws, and that's what the importance of this is in talking about it tonight. So, one misnomer that I would like to address is, and is some citizens talked about a little tonight, is the doctrine of lesser... the lesser magistrate. It's an important doctrine, because that is what John Adams talked about, our Second President. It's basically, as stated tonight, it's a hierarchy of government acknowledges it, doctrine of lesser magistrate. And what that doctrine says is that if a higher form of government does something that originally unlawful and immoral, in our case unconstitutional, and the lesser magistrate, which is a lesser form of government, has the right and the duty to stand up and say, "No, this is not right." So what these counties are doing in Virginia, 40-plus counties in Tennessee, four counties specifically passed an exact same worded resolution as us tonight, that's four county law directors, four sheriffs, four county mayors, had a lady drive for three hours from McNary County tonight to be here tonight to tell me about their resolution that they passed just like us. Their county mayor and their sheriff were the ones that actually helped push this through, and they added even more stringent language. They went a little further than ours and pushed it. So, this is not something that hasn't been fully vetted, the language in the original resolution. So just want people to understand that and be very clear. So, the main thing is, is that I disagree with my colleagues who say that we can't disobey unconstitutional laws. We absolutely can. That's the whole purpose of our former government. That's the whole purpose of the doctrine of the lesser magistrate. Sumner County has the right to refuse to cooperate with state and federal government officials in response to unconstitutional state laws and federal government measures. So, one thing that this resolution does not do, it does not keep the sheriff, by our declaration, from saying that if criminals commit an act, a crime with a firearm, that they can't be detained. If there's already a mental health law from Tennessee Code annotated with their several... Tennessee Title 333, that a court order through due process that does not violate constitutional rights. It does not prohibit the sheriff, if the court order deems that, and it's gone through a right process, to enforce any kind of confiscation. But let's talk about guns for a little bit. I know people who have hung themselves with garden hoses. We don't ban garden hoses. In Europe, they banned guns. In London, you got Islamic extremists who've cut people's heads off with knives, with axes in the middle of the street. We got Islamic terrorists that go and run their cars, their trucks and vehicles. We don't ban those things. So, one thing that I'm thankful for, for our sheriff, is that he is the highest constitutional officer in our land, because he does have authority to say, "We're not going to do this state government. We're not going to do this federal government." He's the ultimate protector against terrorism, acts of terrorism. I mean, when that happens, our sheriffs and our deputies are the ones putting on the line to protect us. So, I would hate to have us not stand with our law enforcement officers and put them on the line to knock on somebody's door who is a lawful-abiding citizen, not somebody who is unlawful, not somebody who is already a felon, not somebody who has committed crimes. We're talking about lawful citizens. And that's the biggest difference, because red flag laws violate at least seven amendments to the Constitution. That is a serious egregious error and a problem that we have to realize and deal with. And so, that is the reason counties have put this forward, is talking about that and wanting to have us do something about it. So, I'm thankful for the Senior Commissioner from the 4th District for amending the main motion for the Bill of Rights to put forward the original resolution that citizens put forward. I do have one amendment to that, that I would like to, I guess, offer as a concession that might help people that have questions or problems. It would help the county law director in the question that she had with Ms. Lepicola. And basically, I want to add an additional clause, which is a severability clause. And I do have a copy of that. I would like to hand to you, Mr. Chairman, and the Madam Law Director, if you don't mind, so you can read what I have. But this severability clause, added to the original resolution, to amend it, is what I'm proposing, to amend the amendment, says, "Be it further resolved, the provisions of this act are hereby declared to be severable, and if any provision of this act or the application of such provision to any person or circumstance is declared invalid for any reason, such declaration shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this resolution." Now, this is important to me, because it protects the integrity of the entire thing should somebody try to say it's unconstitutional. Should they try to say it's not enforceable, whatever. What this does, it basically gives no excuse not to pass, in my opinion, the original resolution. But it also provides, I'll say, peace of mind that, with a severability clause, that how it works, it basically protects any part of its challenge. So I want to offer that up as a concession, that I think is a good idea, that would be helpful, that would address any concerns of language or anything else. But again, I don't personally have concerns, because the four other legislative bodies have passed the exact same thing, some even more strongly worded. I don't know of any commissions that have done a severability clause, so we would be the first to do that, to this Second Amendment sanctuary county resolution. So that is my amendment.
Okay. So you got a motion, amendment to the amendment, and we had a second?
It's on the last page. My apologies, in red.
No, I have it there. So I will re-read that for everyone here. Says, "Be it further resolved, the provisions of this act are hereby declared to be severable, and if any provision of this act or the application of such provision to any person or circumstance is declared invalid for any reason, such declaration shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this resolution." So there's an amendment to the amendment, motion by Mr. Mansfield, second by Mr. Mo Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, one information. Shouldn't we deal with the first amendment, the other amendment first? Because this is kind of off the subject of the original amendment.
Well, we're dealing with the amendment to that, which the amendment is the original resolution. So at this point, we'll proceed with this amendment. Yeah, correct. Correct. So this is amendment to the...
You can amend amendment.
If this amendment has nothing to do with the first... really has nothing to do with the first amendment.
Well, the First Amendment is the... The First Amendment, the original amendment, is to go... ...original resolution. So we need to proceed on this portion. So there's been a proper motion and a second. Any discussion? Hold on one second.
The person who made the amendment and the second could just add that.
Okay. The original, who... I forget who it was. Whoever made the original motion? Are you okay? Is the motion and the second okay to add this one clause? Who is the second?
Mr. Mansfield was the second.
Mr. Mansfield, are you okay with your amendment?
I want to vote on them separately.
Okay. You want to vote on them separately?
Yes.
Okay. The amendment on amendment versus the original amendment separately?
According to Roberts' rules, you can amend amendment to the motion. So we vote on the amendment that I made. We vote on the amendment Foster made, and we go back to the main motion.
Do we get copies of his...
Okay. But the... Hold on one second, real quick. The amendment, the original amendment would be...
My original resolution.
Correct. And if you agree, the maker of the motion is okay adding your resolution without voting on it?
I want to do it separately.
Okay. Fair enough.
Another point of information, please. If this passes, would it also apply to the first, the other resolution?
No. Yeah.
There's no resolution right now.
Right now, the... Well, we have to vote on that amendment to determine that.
I understand. But we are voting, basically, to substitute an amendment for the original, for the amendment of Mr. Taylor. But it's not... Let your name, and others, that that is going to be only on Mr. Mansfield's original amendment. I don't... I'll vote on the severability clause.
Yeah.
I don't think if I don't... I'll be dealt with until we know which proposal we're actually voting on.
Well, if the original amendment fails, then we can add it to the original... Okay. So again, I know it's confusing, but right now, there's an amendment to an amendment to add the clause that...
Voting on, you haven't given us...
Hey, I'm speaking real quick. That's what I'm doing, sir. Okay? So, right now, we're voting on the amendment to the amendment. There may be some discussion, but what's up for vote right now would be to add the clause that we just spoke to Mr. Mansfield's version, I'll call it like that, of the original resolution. So that's... So what's being voted on right now is adding that one clause to his original resolution. Okay. Is that... Yes, Mr. Geminin?
Yes, sir.
You just turn it right back off.
Usually, when you make an amendment, you strike out words and add words. So is that original resolution completely gone? Or is this amendment, is that added to that original resolution? That's what I wanted to know. But it wasn't stated that it's a substitution that I heard.
So, Mr. Mansfield's amendment to the amendment is to add a clause to his original resolution?
Which is the amendment?
Which is the amendment that we're talking about?
So the original resolution is totally gone?
No, 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 no.
No, no. And I'm talking about the one on the paper, 2002-03.
Let me explain it one more time here, hopefully. All right. So the resolution, the main resolution that we're discussing right now is 2002-03, which is the resolution that came to us from the Legislative Committee. Okay. The first amendment that we've been discussing is to remove that, substitute that resolution with the original resolution that was presented to the Legislative Committee.
But it was stated as an amendment.
It's a... Fair enough. So, point of order, Mr. Taylor?
This amendment was stated how differently than the amendment was stated in the Legislative Committee, which replaced the original resolution with the Bill of Rights resolution.
Yeah.
So there's no difference.
Yeah, I'm good with what we're doing here. So, again, the original amendment tonight was to replace, basically amend the entire thing, to going back to the original resolution that was presented. So that was, that's the amendment. We haven't voted on that amendment yet. So hypothetically, hypothetically, if that amendment fails, then we're back to the resolution that the Legislative Committee presented to us. Okay? So we haven't voted on that yet. Now, before we vote on that, there's amendment to the amendment to add the one, the clause that we just read to the amended resolution that we're talking about right now. Is that clear as mud? Okay? All right.
We all have copies of that.
Yeah. Why don't we all have copies?
Hey, hold on one second. Mr. Mansfield, do you happen to have extra additional copies?
I don't. I'm sure somebody on the copy machine will quickly make 20 copies.
Okay. I'll read it. Well, I mean, can we... I'll read it one more time. It says, and it's right, if you've got the original one, it's just right above the last "be it further resolved." So it's the second and last paragraph. Says, "Be it further resolved, the provisions of this act are hereby declared to be severable, and if any provision of this act or the application of such provision to any person or circumstance is declared invalid for any reason, such declaration shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this resolution." Okay? That's what we're just talking about.
Did he just say what's on?
No, that's where it's... That where it would be placed. Okay. So, all right. So looking at the queue, Ms. Echols, you're on the original. Ms. DeWitt, are you... You want to speak to the amendment on the amendment or just the amendment?
Just the amendment.
Okay. Mr. Graves, amendment?
Amendment.
Okay. Mr. Driver? Okay. Ms. Kruger? The amendment, okay.
I can't see you on the other end of the record.
Okay. So, that being the case, there's no one else in the queue on the amendment, on the amendment... How many does this need? 13? Okay. So we need 13... It will need 13 votes to amend the amendment. So we'll put this on the... It still needs 13 of...
24 seats. So it's still 13. That's always been the law. That's always been the law. The only time it's less is if someone has either... There's an empty seat, and the empty seat's not by not being here. An empty seat is there no longer holding office, or they have a direct conflict. Other than that, that's always been the law. It will always take us 13 or 16. It will always take us thirteen or sixteen. That, but that's what our rules have been as long as I've done this.
Okay.
Your, your committees, your committees allow for a lesser amount, but not your, not your commission. I know the rules.
Okay. All right, so, so just so we're all clear, a yes vote on this would be to add the clause to the amendment. A no vote would be to not add that clause to the amendment. Does that make sense? Let's vote.
The amendment to the amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. You're voting on the severability clause. Fifteen votes are entered. Nineteen votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? With twenty-one affirmative votes, the clause is added. We are now on the, the amendment.
Okay. So, so we're all clear. So now that clause is added to the amendment. So now we're back to discussing the amendment. And Ms. DeWitt?
Ms. Echols, did you want to go first?
I'm on the main motion.
You're still on the main motion? Okay. Am I on? Okay. I'm going to hazard something equally confusing, but I believe maybe desirable by this group. So I'm going to pass out another potential resolution. I'm going to suggest that we amend Mr. Foster's amendment with a new resolution. And while he's passing this out, I'll tell you, in large part, it is vastly, it is largely representative of the original motion and original
Just real quick. If, if what you're about to present is completely different, then we need to hold off on that. We need to vote on this, this version of the amendment.
May I not amend his amendment by offering, requesting to replace it with a new resolution?
Oh, it's a substitute?
A substitute.
That's fair enough.
It's an amendment to an amendment. And I realize it is confusing, and I apologize, but I'm asking you to at least consider, and, and let's just talk this through for a second. If we vote this down, I will not be shamed or disappointed. I'm just trying to, as I think a lot of you have come to know me, I, I look for consensus and, and looking to build bridges and looking to build some common understanding. I think that the resolution that was originally proposed by Mr. Mansfield is impassioned, and I respect those that have come here today to speak about it. I could not agree more that we need to defend our rights, our, our Second Amendment rights, all of our rights, as Mr. Taylor's pointed out. I firmly agree that we need to defend everything that our veterans have fought for, but I really do believe that we can do that in good conscience without passing the original resolution, as was proposed by Mr. Mansfield. My concerns with the original resolution, not at all in its passion or its fervor, but in multiple cases, I find that it is misquoting, misrepresenting, misleading to an extent that I think is confusing and unnecessary. And so what I look to provide and offer for your consideration is, is something of a middle ground between the Bill of Rights resolution and the original resolution. What you have in front of you, I have pulled nine of the whereas clauses from the original resolution. So as you read through this, the very first whereas clause is coming from the Bill of Rights resolution. So just to simply set up the framework, and I'm going to read some of this, I'm not going to read every single word, because you have a lot of it already from your original resolution, but whereas our county is formed upon the framework of the United States Constitution as well as the Bill of Rights and such is the basis for our freedoms provided to our country. The next set of whereas clauses are the whereas clauses from the original resolution, numbers one, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, the furthermore statement, the moreover statement. They are corrected. So as an example, in my second whereas clause, I have pulled the original first whereas clause from the original resolution that is quoting the Declaration of Independence, and I've, I've corrected it. Because in the original resolution, and unfortunately, as much as I believe that what is intended and what is so passionately supported here, it, it lost credibility with me very quickly when that very first whereas clause has quotes around it to quote the Declaration of Independence and blatantly left out an important phrase. And in the Declaration of Independence, these rights are to, to pursue life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And that is left out, and it's, it's not annotated correctly. And so I have a really hard time agreeing to support the original resolution, because from that very first statement, it starts to lose credibility, in my personal opinion. And so along with all of the other whereas statements referencing the duty of the lesser magistrates, I've pulled that in. I've pulled in the Second Amendment, as is quoted in the original resolution. I've pulled in the Supreme Court decision, the District of Columbia versus Heller, affirming that the Second Amendment right to keep and bear arms is not connected in any way to service in militia. I think that's extremely important. I've pulled forward the Fourteenth Amendment, the state of, the Tennessee State Constitution or Article One, Section Twenty-Six, the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution. As you go to, I believe it's the backside, the furthermore clause that was in the original resolution is here. I've just omitted the, um, the Ninth Amendment, which was included in your furthermore, but it was never referenced in the original resolution. I have taken out the United, the Tennessee State's Constitution, Article One, Section Twenty-Four. I didn't see that that was relevant to the discussion. I have removed some of the other case law. And I'll be honest, I have spent, I'm sure like many, many of the rest of my fellow commissioners, a lot of time researching and reading and trying to pull together and make sense of this. And as I started to delve into this case law, there were things that I could not understand their relevance. For example, the Miranda law. It's a law that we all uphold and support, but I did not see how that pertained to the resolution we were being asked to, to support. There was other case law that was confusing, that's being used on both sides of the gun law debate, and I really felt uncomfortable, including things that I did not have the depth of understanding necessary in putting my vote in favor of it. The resolution that I proposed to you, it, it concludes with several, therefore be it resolved, statements, and the first three of which are coming from Tennessee's House Joint Resolution Zero Seven Forty-Eight. It is currently moving the, its way through the Tennessee State Legislature, where they have, they're looking at the same topic. And so I've used their resolutions, and so you'll see that language there. And I'm going to read it for the benefit of all those gathered today. So therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting a regular session on this twenty-fourth date of February twenty twenty, will not comply with extra constitutional actions from any government that infringes on the right of, by the people to keep and bear arms as described and defined in detail above. And whereas, we recognize that Tennessee citizens, militia, military, and law enforcement have the responsibility to defend their liberties against enemies, both foreign and domestic. Be it further resolved, we recognize that the primary purpose of the Second Amendment is to keep and bear arms, to protect our freedoms. Be it further resolved, that this body does hereby declare our firm support in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the rights of the commitments made to our country. And be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to our Tennessee delegates to clearly demonstrate that we are opposed to any legislation which would limit these rights. So I hope that I have somewhat clearly summarized what I'm proposing. As I said in the beginning, I hazard to do this, because I know it's confusing, and I know we have now multiple versions in front of us. What I wanted to offer, though, before we made a firm decision on the two options that we were given, is offer a middle ground that I think, I believe, is reflective of a lot of what's going on in the state of Tennessee. So as we've looked into other counties, thank you, Mr. Mansfield, for mentioning that there are four counties that have passed the exact resolution you've proposed. It's been, I think, misrepresented in many cases over the last couple of weeks, that that resolution that has been, had originally been proposed to us, has been passed by a much larger majority of surrounding counties. And so with that information kind of clouding our vision, I, I, I do think we were going down the wrong path. So with four counties that have passed the exact resolution that you've proposed, and several others, I believe, passing something more like what I have proposed. I know that the Rutherford County resolution that just went through reads a lot more like the one I've given you. There, it's, it's just much more condensed. It's more focused. It is less confusing. I think it doesn't reference case law and, and constitutional law that doesn't, is not relevant to this particular discussion. And I think overall, it is encapsulated in our support for the Constitution and Bill of Rights. So that is my suggested amendment.
Okay, so the motion by Ms. DeWitt, second by Mr. Ring. Okay. So this amendment to the amendment. So, um, Mr. Graves, this or later?
I don't know.
Hold on, hold on.
The DeWitt resolution. Foster's amendment, Mr. Mansfield wants us to vote on. His original.
Okay, but, okay, so if you're, if you're on his, if you're on the original amendment?
I don't.
Okay. So we'll, we'll keep you in the queue. Mr. Driver, on this or the? Go ahead. But your, your call.
Just when it comes to what you just handed us here, and I appreciate and, and know that you try to do the best you can, and you're trying to help things out. My issue with it here is, we've had the other two to look at for several days. The, the people that came to speak tonight came to speak based on those two things, and they are not going to have an opportunity to speak on this one. So I'm not really sure if we're going to pass one tonight, how we can pass this one without letting them have a chance to speak on it.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mansfield is the next in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Respectfully, I disagree with this proposed resolution. It's not in the spirit of what citizens put forth. It changes it, like what happened in legislative. It takes away the language specifically at the very end. Now, um, I think you had a good criticism of it in the first whereas clause, where they basically missed some, three ellipses, the dot, 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 to join together the quote. So I think that would be a good change, but, um, other than that, I don't see why you put forth a whole new resolution, just because of what seems to be a grammatical error in the first paragraph. Second thing, you mentioned the Miranda versus Arizona.
Just make sure you direct your comments to the chair, please.
Yes, sir. Second thing, Mr. Chairman, the statement was made of the Miranda versus Arizona. The reason that's in there, and the reason the original writers of this resolution put that in there, because a simple Google search of the actual words in quotation brings up the arguments that were before the court. And this specific phrase is in there. It's important, because it says, "Where rights secured by the Constitution are involved, there can be no rulemaking or legislation which would abrogate them." Red flag laws violate the Second Amendment of the Constitution, and it's very simple. This clause is worthwhile having in there. So I just don't appreciate things that the citizens put forward being stripped out, as the senior commissioner mentioned earlier. And so again, I'm asking for the amendment that Commissioner Foster put forward, which is the original resolution passed as a specifying. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Ring?
Yes, sir. I'm going to try something and see where this goes. I move that we refer this issue to, back to the Legislative Committee, so that the Legislative Committee can deal with this.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can you?
I just moved that we refer this back to the Legislative Committee. This issue.
So there's a motion to refer back to legislative. There's been a second.
All three versions, so the, so we can come up with a, a version that would be acceptable to this commission.
Okay, so the motion's to refer, not defer? All right. So there's a second there. So it is up to, up to debate on referring, so. Looking at the queue. Mr. Graves, you want to comment on this or stay in line?
I'll stay in line.
Okay. Mr. Tinsley? Refer or back?
I have no idea where we are in this long, short, dream.
Right now, right now, the motion's to refer it back to legislative.
I'm going to just skip over that part. I guess I'll continue.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep you in the queue. Mr. Driver on this? Yes, refer is debatable, defer is not. I studied up on that before I got up.
Constitution, the entire Bill of Rights. We're talking about rifle, the Second Amendment. What we should do here is, we don't need to send this back to legislative. We need to vote on the Second Amendment, uh, issue tonight that Mr. Mansfield has brought forward. And next month, those of you who want to do a Bill of Rights, I'll support that too. Take it to legislative, do another one to come through next month, supporting the Bill of Rights. It doesn't have to be together. So that would, that would be my suggestion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hyde. Ms., Ms. DeWitt? Okay. Keep you in queue. I already did that. Mr. Mo Taylor?
Yes, sir.
This is on the, on the motion to refer?
Yes, sir, most definitely. I tried to stay on, on, on point on what we're talking about here, so. Out of, out of all due respect, the citizens came here tonight to have a resolution heard and voted on by the people that they put in these seats. So I respectfully ask that they get that tonight, and that something is either moved up or down. We, we, this was brought forth in January, was, was sent in January. So there's been all kinds of time. I echo the statements from the senior commissioner from the Eighth District on what he just said. Bring forth something next month. We've changed the, you know, we, we've reinvented the wheel to reinvent the wheel. So I respectfully will not be voting to refer.
Okay. Mr. Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I want to thank Commissioner from the First District and the Eighth District. I agree with them completely. I submitted this resolution on January the twenty-eighth. I emailed it to the Legislative Committee. This has been a matter of public record for almost a month. Nobody has ever approached me, not one time, about language, "Hey, Commissioner, you thought about this? I got a problem with this. There's a grammatical error maybe here, or somebody did this." So not one single person came to me. You know, I've been lectured about not going through committee processes. I went through the committee process. Citizens showed up, over sixty people came to that meeting to see this resolution passed, and it was summarily dismissed, completely erased, wiped out, and just replaced with a generic feel-good resolution. So plenty of time. I disagree with any kind of motion to refer, because again, the citizens came here to have us vote on this, up or down. And that's what we need to do, and it's very simple. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Wright? On the motion to refer?
Yes.
Okay.
Where I come from, we call it beating a dead horse. Now, I think we beat it enough. It's either time to, sometimes I'm not politically correct, but I think we need to vote and get this done, do our job.
Okay. Seeing no one else in the queue. So the motion that we're voting on right now, this would be to refer it back to Legislative Committee. So if you vote, a yes vote means you want to refer it to legislative, a no vote means you want to stay and vote on it tonight.
Resolution, uh, the, refer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone wish to change your vote?
Okay, so with
If the refer fails to carry, we're back on the amendment to the amendment, the DeWitt resolution.
All right, so we're on, we're on Ms. DeWitt's, we're on Ms. DeWitt's resolution. As she's handed out, that would replace, um, the original, original resolution. Okay. Ms. Echols, I know you're still in the queue, but I'm going to wait on you, or you want to chime in? Okay. Mr. Tinsley, we're on Ms. DeWitt's amendment, amendment.
So we have a pile of amendments and resolutions in front of us, and we have sat here for hours, listening to people who have spent their evening telling us what they want us to do. And I think I'm going to have to echo Mr. Wright here and say that we're going to have to kind of move this along, because we're beating a dead horse, as he would say. I think, I think we're, I, I support the Second Amendment, obviously, but I also support the Bill of Rights. And I want to commend my counterpart, Commissioner DeWitt, for And I want to commend my counterpart, Commissioner DeWitt, for trying to find middle ground in that, but unfortunately, I'm going to have to vote against her amendment to support the amendment that Commissioner Mansfield put forward for the sole purpose of the fact that it's what the people wanted done. Like Commissioner Hyde said, next month, we can come in here and we can support the Bill of Rights, we can support, we can take certain Bill of Rights out of there and support those individually if we want to. We can, you know, reaffirm our stance on the Second Amendment next month. But I think it's, I think we're kind of getting really muddy and kind of getting confused. I know people in the crowd are getting confused on what we're doing because there's three amendments in front of us, and I think we need to kind of start calling down and getting to the point.
Okay, thanks, sir. Ms. Krueger, this is on Ms. DeWitt's amendment.
Right, okay, one basic thing in the first, therefore it be resolved, be it resolved on the back, there is a small typo. It says will not, will not twice, so if we want to cross that first will not out, or the second one, you see what I'm talking about?
Where was that one? I'm sorry.
On the back, where it's therefore be it resolved, the first place where it's therefore be it resolved.
Oh, I see.
Will not, will not.
This didn't need a typo. Okay, was there another?
And I guess that's my only comment I have on this one. This one does not seem to be, maybe I should, can I ask the maker of this a question?
Sure.
The initial amendment seems to be a bit more restrictive as far as we'll be breaking, asking our sheriff's deputies and our sheriff's department, and that's their, so forth, to go against the Tennessee State Constitution or the United States Constitution, which they've taken an oath to uphold, if those were to change in some way. This one does not seem to be nearest divisive in that, in the wording of that. Is that correct?
Intent.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Okay, so is the original maker and second are okay with striking out the double will not, then we'll move forward? Okay, good. Mr. Driver on Ms. DeWitt, okay, while you're waiting. Mr. Ring on this, on Ms. DeWitt's amendment.
Thank you. I appreciate Ms. DeWitt putting this forward. It gets rid of my major objection to the other one, which was the therefore clause that I thought, I felt was not appropriate for us to support. This one, people could question it, but I believe this is a much more succinct version. It's less wordy, it's going to be easier for people to understand than the other one. I believe that this is a, and it covers the main points of the other resolution, so I will vote to support this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. DeWitt?
I did, I messed it up. I just wanted to comment, it was pointed out that, I understand that providing something new without notice is uncomfortable. It was, it's been a very difficult couple of weeks trying to figure out a path forward to try to find a way that would, would bring us together. I just urge you to consider that almost, I would say, 80% of the language that's in the resolution I proposed to you is coming directly out of the original proposed resolution, so a lot of that language should be very familiar, and that might, you know, because I can, I think the knee-jerk reaction would be that, yeah, we haven't looked at this, we can't really think about it, so I understand why you would, on that merit, vote it down. There's other reasons why you would vote it down. I just want to encourage you to realize that you have seen this language quite a bit before now.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. DeWitt. Mr. Hinton.
We need to make up our mind whether we want to get it right or get it done. It don't look like we having much success now. I know there's a lot of pressure here that we'll pass something to make the people that spoke on this issue happy, and that's a good thing, if you can pull that off. But are we rushing to get something done to accomplish that, or is there a more right way to do this than just pass it and get rid of it? Now, at this time of night, the temptation to pass something and get rid of it gets pretty strong. But I don't know why anybody, if we can convince ourselves that we're going to delay this to get it right, why anybody, either up here or in the audience, would be bothered with that. It really disappoints me to think that we'd rather run it on and get it out of the way than spend the time it takes to get it right. So I think that's the issue between us, before us. If we want to get it done, let's get it done. Let's quit worrying about what it's going to say, whether it's going to be right, whether it's going to be this, pass something, and we'll adjourn and go home. If you want it right, we may need to stay here and we may have to finish this up next month. So everybody needs to make up their mind which way we want to do. If we want to go home, then let's pass something and go home.
Please those in the audience, we've, it's obviously late, everyone's getting a little tired here, but just please refrain from making comments as we're speaking up here. Please show us that respect.
Even the, even the delay that would be caused by sending this back to committee, that don't please anybody. I mean, I'd like to be finished tonight with this project and we're done, we don't have to talk about. But if that has a chance to improve the process or the end result, then that's kind of a small price to pay. And, and we're not, we didn't have this before us to pass last month. I mean, what is, is there a deadline when we got to get this in the hands of somebody in Nashville? I doubt it. I doubt it. So we don't have, we don't have to rush to get this accomplished. We can do it, if we know what right is, if we can decide what that is, then we can sit about to cause that to happen, and if it takes till next month's meeting, that'll be a small price to pay. Thank you.
All right, so we're still discussing the amendment on the amendment, Ms. DeWitt's version here. Mr. Mansfield on this topic? You're in the queue on the amendment on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There is no rush because we've had this before us for a month. There's no excuse. We've had plenty of time to read this, there's been plenty of time to ask questions, both in committee, which nobody in the committee asked questions. They just changed it. That's not fair to the citizens. I disagree with that approach. I disagree with the comments previously made. I disagree with opinion. That's my right. We all have that right to express that opinion. But I know for a fact, the citizens do not feel like we're rushing anything. I know for a fact that these citizens have requested of us that we just put this forward. It's been out there for months. These people are very aware. There's no rush for them. This is very clear. Most of us in here, it's very clear. I think we have strong support to pass the original amendment that Mr. Senior Commissioner from the Fourth District made to the main motion, which was in my original resolution. So I just disagree with any statements saying that we're rushing things and we need to wait any longer because there's nothing unclear about this, and we added a severability clause for anybody who is unclear. Thank you.
Okay, all right, no one else in the queue? We'll put this to vote. Again, so a yes vote on this would be to accept the amendment on the amendment, which would be Ms. DeWitt's handout resolution. Everybody clear on the yes vote on that? No vote means we go back and we'll vote for the original amendment.
Approval of the resolution submitted by Commissioner DeWitt is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With nine affirmative votes, the amendment fails to carry. We're back on the First Amendment as amended.
Okay. All right, so now we're on the, yes, the First Amendment that was amended. So what that means is we're on the discussion of the original resolution that we already added the one, the severability clause. Does that make sense? So that's what's on the floor now. We've got some people in the queue, so let's, let's go through here. Ms. Echols will wait on you. Mr. Driver?
Did you say no yet?
Yeah, she's on the main motion.
You're on the main motion.
She's been patient.
Okay, we're on the motion to move, I just wanted to double check.
Okay.
To move the original submitted and substitute it for the one in the packet tonight.
Hold on a second.
Say that one more time.
Yes, right now, what we're discussing and voting on is the--
The Second Amendment.
That, yeah, well, yeah, that, yes, the, what I'll say, the original, original version that we added the one clause tonight. So that's what we're discussing right now. Is that what you want to talk about?
We're discussing the original, original.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah, the original, original with the clause.
Okay, and I'm sorry to be doing this, it's late. We just, we've been through this, but I didn't get to say this earlier, and I just want to say I disagree with some things that were said tonight. One thing is, somebody said that nobody's coming after our other rights. I disagree with that for sure. They're coming after our First Amendment rights as well and every other kind of right we have. I do understand and I appreciate the people who are in opposition to this tonight and talking about the need for folks in suicide prevention and all that. I do realize that, but unfortunately, I think we've seen in other parts of the country that these laws have been used to try to take guns, to circumvent the Second Amendment and to get around some laws. And unfortunately, I've discussed with several people this week, you know, we, I've seen things in the last two decades that I never thought I would saw in my lifetime in this country, and I'm afraid there are more of them on the way. So, you know, if we have a chance to stand up and say something again early and now, this is the time to do it for sure. You know, I'm also with Mr. Hyde, I have no problem with coming back since we're so late and doing one for the Bill of Rights the next time around. I'm all about that, and anyway, I think we do need a strong statement here, and I'm going to vote for this, and I call for the question on the amendment.
Actually, you can't have it every month.
Hold on a second. Is your quick, let me--
Mr. Chairman, it's your call.
Hey, hold on a second. Mr. Tate, what is your concern again?
He needs to put his microphone. He needs to put his microphone.
Put your microphone, please, I'm sorry.
Out of all due respect, it's just, it's, it may happen every month, but if it's out of order, it's out of order. Can, you gain the floor to speak, you cannot end discussion by calling for the question after you've had your time to speak.
Oh, at the, at the end of, you're saying that, you're, okay.
If you're calling a point of order, your only point is to call a point of order.
I got you.
And gaining the floor.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll go along with, I'll agree, the chair will agree with your point of order there. So next in queues, Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Sullivan was there for me in some way.
He's, he's right behind you.
All right, Mr., all right. We do these kind of things all the time. Since I've been here, however many years it's been, it's been several. We, we recommend and suggest and push to get our resolution to the state or the federal government or wherever we're going to do. It ain't like this the first time we ever done this. I'm going to support the Second Amendment that Commissioner Mansfield, Mansfield has brought up, because I really believe the other, I really believe the other resolution that was brought from legislative was done in the process. They didn't have nothing on paper to lay, to let meeting that night, and then they didn't have it rolled out till after the meeting. But anyway, as I was growing up in a small town of Bethpage, there was an incident happened back about, you know, a lot of stealing going on, theft. There were some citizens that made some arrests for them cases, and it was one today. A friend of mine had his vehicle sitting close to the road over the weekend, and somebody stole the wheels and tires over and just set it down on the ground. Now, if we didn't have our guns of some kind, those kind of deals, unless our county sheriff department was riding by, we wouldn't have a chance to, those kind of incidents. They may have pulled a gun on him if they went down and said, "What are you doing?" If we didn't have our guns, that's just a point, statement I got to make, and I concur. I prayed about this for the last week or so, off and on. Brought it up at church, actually. We've got people that's got their guns in church now. Probably everybody in here just about goes to church. If we didn't have, somebody walked in the door with guns, what do you think had happened? It's already happened in places. But that's, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it, sir. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, I call for the question.
There you go, okay. All right, so calling for the question would mean, would cease discussion or debate and move forward with voting on the amended amendment?
Wait a second.
Okay, so there, is there a second to this?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hinton, I heard Mr. Hinton first. Mr. Hinton be the second on this, okay? So the call for question is--
Sixteen to end debate.
Oh, yeah, 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 so we need 16 votes for this, so go ahead and put on--
One person per question.
Okay.
So you got to push your microphone.
The amendment does replace the original motion, so that's kind of the intent of what's happening with this. I mean, that's, so that is, I mean, there's nothing else to come back to. Same what happened in legislative. The original resolution got amended and it disappeared. This amendment is replacing the original Bill of Rights, is my understanding.
So what we're doing right now, this call for the question will cease debate on, on Mr. Foster's original amendment tonight?
We're on Mr.--
Or who, is it Mr. Foster? See?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so then, so then, so we'll call for the question for the amendment, and then we'll, then we'll vote on the amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Everybody clear?
The vote on the question to end debate is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-one, all 22 votes entered. Do you wish to change your vote? With 19 affirmative votes, the question is approved. We're back on the First Amendment as amended.
Okay, so we're back on the First Amendment as, so this is, so this is again, to the original, original amendment, or resolution, excuse me, the original, original resolution with the clause, okay?
You ready?
Is everybody clear? There's--
No, no, no.
Oh, we already, yeah, we stopped that, so yes, let's vote.
All right, here we go. We're back on the--
So, this is the amendment. This amendment will be to replace the Bill of Rights resolution. Makes sense?
With the Second Amendment.
Yes, so this amendment, a yes vote right now will replace, I'll say, the Bill of Rights version with the Second Amendment version. Everybody understand? So a yes vote right now will replace that.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 17 votes, the amendment is approved. We're back on the most main motion as amended. We got--
Okay.
We have to vote on the main motion?
We do, we do, okay. So now we're back to the main motion, okay? So now the main motion has been amended with the Second Amendment with the clause. Ms. Echols, you've been waiting for a while.
Do I have to press something? Oh, there we go. I don't speak very often, so really what I had was edits to the Bill of Rights, but clearly we're not going to get to that, but I may as well talk since I've been sitting here for a while. here for a while. Or go home, whatever. I guess I would say we're about to vote on this, it will probably pass, I will vote against it. I would ask that you not villainize me. I'm probably not gonna run for reelection again, so you can threaten that, you know, if you'd like, but I'm voting the way that I feel like the people that elected me would like me to vote.
All right, thank you. Mr. County Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have listened to a debate tonight, it has been pretty divisive. But, you know, one thing I noticed, everyone spoke, got a great crowd here, I appreciate you folks coming, a lot of commissioners, I didn't hear one person speak against Second Amendment tonight, not one. Not one. We spent a lot of time arguing on how we need to craft something. And whatever the commission passes tonight, I don't know if these folks know how it works, but you pass something, I can always veto it. I'm not gonna veto it, I'm gonna sign it into law. But let me say this, there's a battle going on in the country, and it's not here in Tennessee. We're pretty much like-minded. Maybe I don't like the way somebody cuts their hair, or maybe I don't like them because they got more hair than me. But the reality is, we're pretty like-minded. You come up to my farm, I'm your, your friend, you act friendly, I'm gonna treat you as a neighbor. I'm kinda like Mr. Wright, you come up to my farm and you are hostile, you probably get shot, 'cause I have guns too, just like everybody. But here's the reality. The reality is, we need to get out and vote. The reality is, we need to participate in the census, because this area's grown a lot. And you need to encourage your friends and neighbors to participate in the census, because if we don't get the right count, we don't increase our representation. And I can tell you, in the Northeast, in the West Coast, those are the people you gotta be afraid of if you want, if you like guns. You don't have to be afraid of Tennesseans, you don't have to be afraid of this commissioner. But I want to make one statement, and I've had multiple people call my office today, 'cause I'm here all the time, and I take a lot of phone calls. Nobody, nobody, I heard the sheriff, sheriff's still here somewhere, me, any elected official, any commissioner, are gonna take anybody's guns in Sumner County. So I just want to make that statement, because I've heard that over and over again. People upset, my guns are gonna be taken. I don't know if Fakebook, I'm sorry, Facebook sent that message out, but that's not true. And I don't know anybody here, this commissioner needs to be demonized, because I really believe, they really believe, that everyone's Second Amendment rights need to be protected. And I do thank all of you for a great debate tonight. We've been here four hours, I thought I'd stretch it out, make it, you know, a little bit more enjoyable. But the reality is, you're all like-minded. So please, don't go demonize somebody because they can't get it in the proper form that you think you want it, because I'm telling you, there's a lot of people here tonight, but there's a lot more people that have a lot differing opinions. There's two hundred thousand people in this county. And all of our opinions are equally valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've got two more people in the queue, Mr. Ring.
Thank you, sir. I just want to reiterate what I said before. I don't have a problem with anything in this resolution, except where it says, "The Board of County Commissioners of Sumner County, Tennessee Government will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, building, detention center, or offices for the purpose of enforcing or assisting in the enforcement of any element of such act, laws, orders, mandates, rules, or regulations that infringe on the right by people to keep and bear arms as described and defined in detail above." That is saying that we will not follow state law. We are required to follow state law by the Tennessee State Constitution, so I will be voting against this, because I believe it's a violation of my oath of office. Now, I understand you will say this has been passed in other counties. Well, my, my suspicion is, in the other counties, it was like, well, this is never gonna happen, so it doesn't matter if we vote for it. I'm not of that opinion. I'm of the opinion is, I'm not gonna vote for something that I find opposes my oath of office, so I will be voting opposed to this, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. We still have two in the queue? Nope, just one now, Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as I've stated multiple times, this resolution does not say in any way that we're gonna disobey the law. It says we're gonna disobey and not enforce, don't even say disobey, it says we're not gonna enforce unconstitutional laws or measures, essentially, as a spirit from the state. So that's not obeying a law. A law is something that's just and constitutional. If it's unconstitutional, it's not a law. It's tyranny. So it's pretty simple. And with the statement that was just made by the senior commissioner, that's why I offered the severability clause, 'cause what it does, it puts to ease any concerns of one portion of the entire document, should it be challenged, should it do anything like that, it protects the rest of the document. So therefore, it kinda makes that argument on the void. Appreciate the county mayor talking about the census tonight. Agree on one point, definitely, there's a lot of people coming in, what the census does, especially when you have people coming from a lot of places who don't have our values and our culture, they try to change it to be things where red flag laws are passed in New Jersey or Maryland and places like that. So it's even more important, because of what he stated, that we do do this to let those people coming here know, this is our stance. If you don't like it, you're free to go to another state that has those laws, but don't bring them here, because they're not welcome. Those ideas are not welcome here, of laws that violate the United States Constitution. Red flag laws violate the United States Constitution. It's very simple, it's very clear. And there's nothing more important, the census is not more important than the United States Constitution when it comes to counting people versus defending that constitution. Now, the census is a part of that constitutional process. You know, we have to count people in order to know what the congressional lines are in the districts. So, but the Second Amendment is the most important thing, disagree with the county mayor on that. So I thank you guys for putting this to a vote, I appreciate you guys supporting the citizens in what they want to happen tonight, thank you.
Okay, no one else in the queue? We'll go ahead and vote.
Resolution twenty oh two oh three as amended is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
We've still got some agenda items to discuss. All right, so that's, that was twenty oh two dash oh three. We also had twenty oh two dash twenty-one that was added at the beginning of this meeting, that essentially is no longer needed. Okay, so moving on, Financial Management Committee. We, there's a policy subcommittee meeting that was, that met tonight, and we approved some stuff to move forward. If you, I know you guys are leaving, if, if you can just please keep it as quiet as you can as you're leaving, thank you. So that's moving forward, so Budget Committee. Who's? All right. Mr. Chris Taylor?
All right. Two thousand two dash zero four, it's appropriating forty-five thousand flow-through funding from the city of Portland for use on the twenty eighteen CDBG waterline project, I saw move.
Okay, motion by Chris Taylor, second by Mr. Foster. No one in the queue? All in favor? Any opposed? So that's unanimous, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. Two thousand two dash oh five, appropriating up to a hundred thousand dollars from Capital Project Fund is detailed on the attached for the engineering of the self-enclosed Liberty Creek Park. This is for the green space that's located in the new school, the new school. And what it's gonna do is, it's gonna allow us to access a million dollar grant from, up to a million dollars from the state. I saw move.
Motion by Mr. Chris Taylor, second by Mr. Foster. Mr. Mo Taylor?
Yeah, with these grant documents being hundreds and hundreds of pages, is there any mention in any of those about a greenway being attached to this park?
That Mr. Brown left to us, this is in relation to that.
Okay, but there's a lot of things that could go with that, so anyways, with my fear of the, no clarification on that, I'll be abstaining on this motion.
Mr. County Mayor, did you have a? Okay.
Just gonna mention that this is the planning work we need to do to apply for the grant. Commissioner Taylor was correct. We have a half million dollars that Mr. Brown left us. This would give us the ability to apply for a half million dollar grant and give us a million dollars to establish the park inside that two hundred sixty-five acres where there'd be a high school, middle school, and elementary school.
Okay, thank you, sir. No one else in the queue? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed? Get, show the record abstentions from Mr. Mo Taylor and Mr. Mansfield. Anybody else abstain there? Okay, any other motions?